All right, I'll go ahead and call the August 9, 2016 regularly scheduled meeting of Bristol, Virginia City Council to order. We'll begin with a moment of silence. All right, if you stand, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance stood the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will move to matters to be presented by members of the public. And the first person on the list is Ms. Catherine Jewell.
I actually just have some, my name's Catherine Jewell, I live in Leesville. I just have some questions and various things. I saw in the paper this morning, the Concept Hotel coming to the Falls. And yeah, I was like, wow, so the public doesn't get any participation in decisions? And then I looked further down and I saw that it was going to be voted on tonight. And I have some questions about that. First, how much did we get for the purchase of that property?
The industrial development authority has with the developer, that we don't get the purchase price. In other words, the contract gives that property to the developer. The developer then either leases what they build or they sell the property. In this particular case, it's a sale.
What, okay, I'm lost. But we purchased that property, or did the developer purchase that property?
We purchased the property. We have subdivided it. But the contract that the city signed years ago with the developer calls for, as those lots are developed, they are transferred to the developer who then either builds on or sells. In this case, it'll be a sale to the Patel's, to the prime hospitality group.
Wow, what a sweet deal. So we invest all that money in that rock haul and all the development, extending the road to a tune that I don't even want to sing, and we get nothing for that? Who came up with that contract?
Ms. Jewell, let me say this. I think that when we get into the discussion, I think your answers to your questions will be answered pretty well because I have plenty, I have plenty I want to ask you too tonight.
I mean, I am absolutely...
Appalled?
Yeah.
Is that a good word?
Well, no, it's worse than that. The English language doesn't contain a superlative to let me express my...
Fair enough.
Yeah. Okay, I have a few more questions, I guess. What is the current percent occupancy of hotels? How many hotel rooms do we have in the city of Bristol? Multiply that by 365. Does anybody know?
Somebody will probably do a study about that. They always have studies, you know, they pay $20,000 for studies.
Because I'm wondering, what is the occupancy rate currently? Because, you know, what I see here is you have a pool, okay? And it's limited. And there might be some people that are attracted because of a structure or something that's located there. There are certain times of the year where you get a larger inflow, okay? But actually, what you're doing is competing with the other ones already in that existing pool. But in this case, it looks like you're also giving them, granting them 300, what the, I mean, I really, I really, I really... Okay, all right, so maybe we'll discuss that. And but I'm, Jesus Christ, let's see. So we want to know how many, what the occupancy rate, what are the rooms available? And this is, is this, is this called the, is this number four, or is this number three that I'm speaking on?
This would be number three, Ms. Jewell. And you're more than welcome to come back during that portion to address that particular agenda item. So if you have things of more of a general nature, that's what you need to be speaking to right now.
Okay, well, that's my comments to be applied at a later time. And also with respect to the solid waste code, I just want to point out that, you know, there are some increases. And with that, I did look into this, and a study done 12 years ago showed that the average municipal rate was between $15 and $20. Now, that was 12 years ago, okay? And that usually is a general pickup and not including the other services we have. So that's, that's it. Oh, one more question. These board, like the school board, does that have its own attorney? Who's the attorney? And these other boards, they all have attorneys?
Some do, but not all.
Do we have different attorneys for each board?
Well paid.
It's on the board you're talking about. The BVU board has its own attorney.
Yeah, BVU has its own attorneys. I'm trying to think, well, okay, IDA, because that's what I guess this thing's about. Does it have an attorney?
Yes, the city attorney.
It does. It's me, but it's not part of the city, it's not as the city attorney. It used to be Elliot Lawson and mine at one time.
So now you basically wear both hats, Mr. Kershaw, is that correct?
Is that a conflict?
That's correct.
Have you had an opinion on that? That's a good question, Ms. Jewell. Have you had an opinion if that is a conflict, Mr. Kershaw?
I don't think it's a conflict.
Well, I'm not asking you what you think. I'm asking you, have you ever had an opinion to see if it's a conflict?
No.
Because it sounds like, you know, we don't know about this thing, then it's done deal, then you read down here, and it's got the possibility. And I mean, personally, it seems like that is a conflict. If that, if this part of this thing is for some reason private, which I really don't understand why it is, because, I mean, in the end, we all pay the taxes.
Thank you, Ms. Jewell. And thank you for what you did.
All right, thank you. Next on the list, I believe is Dolphus Brewer.
I appreciate you all's time. I know, hey, that Buhr Auction got me up on Lee Highway, where the Falls is now. I know it's been a little time before I came to you guys to talk to. But when I found out that Drew was leaving the city, I just wanted to hear from him why that I was never confronted with what I was promised from the city. I mean, yes, you know, most time we dealt with Bart Poe. Bart was always sent up. Bart's a good man. Bart would tell you right. But Drew come up right after the Falls was started, said the city does not want to lose. Buhr Auction Company. Well, Buhr Auction Company was the oldest slicing auction company since 58. He'd say, we're going to do this to keep Buhr. Keep Buhr's a gone. Well, at the time when this all started, we had 23 employees. 23 employees. We had people coming out of North Carolina, Tennessee, Kentucky, West Virginia, and I'm missing one. Now, we're spending money here in this area to come to my auction. I was taken to different places to look for an auction to move me. They took me out to the dairy, showed me the dairy building out in front of the mall. There ain't no place for a car auction. Then I was promised the property down here behind the food city. We get this building tore down, we gonna put you there. Then we went up, looked at the property up here behind Morris Potato Chips, up there that you developed that y'all doing now. And I just wanted to confront Drew, and I didn't come down here to bash him, but I'm old school, and I just wanted to hear from him to tell me why that Buhr's was promised this and that, and that was never delivered. And I'm not going to mention no name from a gentleman from the interstate development that was even sent up. I've got his card, know him personally. He sat right there in the lobby, and he said, officer, I've been set up here by the city of Bristol to guarantee you that Buhr Auction Company want to take care of Buhr Auction Company. I'm a one-man operation. I think I done pretty decent. 2010, my gross revenues was $7 million. 2011 was $10 million. 2012, we went to $12 million. And then this is when it all started with the Falls. The developers, put my, everybody come in, said, well, how long you going to stay? I said, I don't know. The city said they're going to work with me. Well, I know now that never happened. And then 2013, we did another $10 million. But 2014, when we started all the dynamiting and doing all the, moving all the rock, which is a rock for you, my business dropped down to $827,000. Now, I know I'm a small company, but I feel like that Buhr Auction Company and the small people in this area ought to have some say-so and be looked at, not just pushed to the side like I was. And that's what I've come to say. I mean, when I found out Drew was leaving, I just felt like I had it on my chest for the last 16 months. And I paid you guys, I rented off y'all for 25 months, I paid y'all $137,500. In the 16 months, actually, March 31st, when I got out up there, if I was still there, which y'all have not done anything with that property, I would have paid y'all another $88,000. Now, I think the city could use that money.
Mr. Brewer, first of all, thank you for coming. And, you know, I don't know how the rest of the councilmen feel, but I certainly, I know what your company has done for the city in the past. I think what happened to you, your family, your situation is regrettable. And I think that people that made the mistakes and so forth that cost the city have to live with that. Mr. Brewer, you say there were, were there promises actually made to you?
Yes.
And were they made by this gentleman that's leaving in about 10 days?
And did you not tell me to my wife at the auction, say, we want to take care of you guys. We'll have to relocate you guys, but we'll leave you here as long as we can. Did you not?
And Mr. Brewer, one last thing. When you pointed up here and you talked about the rentals, and you said you all, I assure you, I ain't had any of that, okay? Well, this city, I hope this city has gotten some of the benefit, and I'm sorry what's happened to you, sir. And, you know, there's a comeuppance day.
Well, I just feel like the small man deserves a chance, just like these gentlemen get they put in this motel up here.
Maybe.
You know? Why can't I have a chance?
Yeah, how much money did you get, by the way, Mr. Brewer? How much no net losses did you get from the city of Bristol, Virginia? How much did the councils in the past offer your company?
Not a doubt.
So in other words, you actually had to make it on your own and so forth and so on without any incentives from the taxpayers here? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. I called one time about the sewer up there. I paid for that out of my pocket.
Out of your own pocket?
Yeah, paid that. And then the building, when they started dynamiting and stuff, the building was just going all to pieces. We couldn't stay in that building much longer.
Right.
But my pride, my reason why I'm sort of upset, and I know I waited too long, maybe to come, but my old schoolman's handshake is worth, is worth a piece wrote down on a piece of paper, as the way I was always brought up with my dad. And I guarantee you, everyone in this business, you know, people in this area, in this building, know who Bud Buhr was. And if he told you he was going to do something, he would do it. And that's the way I did it, and that's the way I do my business to this day, you know? So, but it's been on my chest, and I just want to get it off. Let's know, I think that Buhr Auction Company is done dirty. And thank y'all for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Brewer. Next on the list is Mr. Michael Pollard.
My name is Michael Pollard. I live at 101 Ashley Drive. The, what I had come to speak about, turns out that it will be covered more appropriately under Sections 1 and 3 on the agenda, so I'm not going to talk about those right now. Section, part of that under number 3, though, I didn't know until just a minute ago that it fit under number 3, because what is meant by project on, even in the multi-page, I think it's some 50 pages or so of the online agenda, there was absolutely no explanation given. Yeah, that's openness and transparency. But that's, that's going to come up under number 3, so I'll leave it at that for now. I would like to follow up briefly on what Mr. Brewer was talking about. I know someone who used to work near the Falls as well. And the company that he used to work for, which fortunately is still there for now, had their business sign taken down in the process of widening the road. They were told that as soon as the road widening was completed, they'd be allowed to put their sign back up. As soon as the road widening was completed, they were told, no, that sign doesn't fit under current code. What about a replacement? No, no signs allowed there under current code. So what do we do? Sorry, that's up to you. Okay, that doesn't work so well. Anyway, that was just a follow-up because the topic has now come up. It's one more business that has been made promises, and those promises were, saying that they were not fulfilled is a dramatic understatement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jewell.
Thank you, Mr. Pollard. Next on the list, Mr. Eddie Barnes.
I was going to talk to Eddie, but my son would go in, he was able to say what I was going to say.
Okay. He can make it quick, Eddie.
My name's Casey Barnes, 43, Patriot Circle, mayor, councilman. I just wanted to update you about the Clear Creek PGA Junior League team. We won the Tri-Cities Chapter this year, and now we're coaching the All-Stars team. We beat Knoxville 1 yesterday. And next week, we'll go on to play Knoxville 3, and hopefully we'll move on a little farther. And I'll keep you up to date.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Time's up. The time's up. Mr. Barnes, your time's up. I'm sorry, you run out. No, I'm just kidding.
Eddie Barnes, Kevin Corbett appreciates this more than anybody, probably, because he used to coach Casey in baseball All-Stars. My boys grew up, they played minor league All-Stars, little league All-Stars, county league All-Stars, and coke league All-Stars. And during those years, there wasn't a golf, junior league golf. The only golf, boys like my head, was over here at King College, and you had nine holes, and they played the best they could. But they did have a golf team, and they learned from it. But this junior golf league that they had, they had 17 children that played on the Clear Creek Golf Club. They had children that come here from Chelhawley, from Abingdon, from Washington County, and a lot of them from Bristol, Virginia. We had girls, we had boys. And we had one child, well, better not get into it. That program has really helped a lot of children in more ways than one. And some of y'all I've talked to personally about how it's helped some of the children. It's a good program that I see a great future for the city. And if you look through the past several years, Casey has give out, I don't know how many scholarships, golf scholarships for these young people from the high school. The high school team plays up there. Carlos Lee's grandson, Carlos Lee's a golf coach, and his grandson was up there the other day at a free junior clinic that they put on. They had 30-some kids for it. They had the Ballard League Tournament last Saturday, raised several thousand dollars for the Ballard League Foundation. If anybody don't know who Ballard League is, I can tell you. But I know you guys know. But I just wanted you to really appreciate that golf team and what it's doing and the work that they're doing up there. I'll quit, man. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes.
Is there anyone else that'd like to speak that didn't sign up? Yes, Ms. Marnie? Did you get here late and forget to sign up?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Nancy Marnie. I'm a resident of the city of Bristol, Virginia. I'm a property owner. I had an experience about a week ago that I think is really just a fantastic situation. I was privileged to be included with what ended up being five people to talk about some of the landfill problems and charges and so forth. Our city manager, Ms. Crowder, was there. Mr. Pollard was there, Ms. Jewell, Allen from the landfill, and I. And even though the scope of our purpose was somewhat limited for very good reasons, I think that is one of the best meetings I have ever been in in my life. And I want to thank this council for what you did to start that. That's a different line of thinking. It's a different line of thinking. But it was a group of incredibly capable people. That's why I felt so privileged to be included. It was a group of incredibly capable people. And they have the brain power, they have the knowledge, they certainly have the interest and the caring that it takes. And during this rather limited scope, we kind of got off. Now, you know, of course, I'd never do that. It was those young people doing that, going off on tangents and so forth. But we, we went out, but we came back. But every time we went out and came back, we took a step forward. And it will ultimately prove, I think, to be one of the best things that's been done in a mighty long time. So I congratulate you for what you have started. Where it will end, none of us knows. We may kill each other another time. But for what you have started, and for what was done in that meeting with the other four people, I felt very privileged to be a part of that meeting. And I thank them for their brain power, their interest, their caring, their knowledge, and their willingness to listen. It was a give and take, and a listening, and idea swapping, which I just love. And we just about had it all, except enough time. But thank you for your beginning. It was your beginning, and I appreciate having been a part of it.
Nancy, thank you for saying those things. First, it's, it's very nice that we have a new city council that decides to think differently than we've had ever before, ever before. When citizens come up here and talk and so forth, quite frankly, and ask questions or angry about something, then the best way is to have citizens' groups get together. I've always been an advocate of that because I think that a lot of people that are sitting out there are a lot smarter than some up here, okay? That's my, I mean, that's my belief. And, you know, so thank you for saying the nice things you said, and thank you for your efforts.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? All right, we'll move to the...
I want to make just one comment. I think that will continue what Nancy said, but, you know, this city's got a lot of complex problems. I don't want you to think that this council has all the answers, because we're, you know, we have only certain amounts of expertise up here. So the only way you can accomplish, you know, positive results on very complex problems is you get more people involved that can look at it closer, look at it harder from a different perspective, and can give you good input. And then you, you've got to decide on the input. We never make a decision in business on perfect input. You know, every decision we make has risk. So we'll make some good decisions, and we'll make some bad decisions. Hopefully, we will correct a lot of the really, really bad decisions of the past. And a lot of folks I hear get up here tonight and previous council meetings are bringing up a lot of things that's happened over historical time, while obviously, we can't fix that. But I think we're going to set a new tone, or try to set a new tone, to get more people involved, ask the right questions, ask tough questions, so we can move forward at some pace in a positive manner.
Your minutes, your minute. Mayor's remarks.
Yeah, and I'll just add to that. I think, you know, everyone here, as Nancy said, that the give and take of discussion, and some people might call that a little, not as orderly, but I think it's very healthy at times. And I remind people these opportunities. And one, we mentioned last week during the State of the Cities, that we're going to be sitting down with our counterparts in Tennessee, and I'm glad to see Councilwoman Margaret Frye-Robin here from Bristol, Tennessee, that, you know, we will sit down with them and try to come up with a joint visioning process. And I've already had people say they want to be a part of that. So that's what we need, is people to get actively engaged in the affairs of this community and to be a part of that healthy discussion. So I appreciate the work, and I was going to say that till we actually talk about the ordinance, but I do appreciate the work of all the people on item number one when we get to it. Anybody else?
Oh, I want to add one thing. Last week, we had a meeting. I got 24-hour notice that there was going to be a meeting, and I wanted the public to know this. I served on Bristol, Virginia Utility Board for six years. Most dysfunctional group of people I've ever seen in my life, and the worst board in the history of, I don't know, boards, maybe. But I want you to know this is concerning to me. On BVU board, how we used to do business is they would bring in a member or two, and this is before the last year or so, Mr. Asher, so you're, I'm not implicating you in that at all, sir, but back about four or five years ago, what they would do is that for four or five years, you would come in, you would have a meeting. Now, you would have the CEO, and you'd have the CFO, and you would have another board member. Typically, I got Paul Hurley. And I'll tell you, if Paul hadn't have been a principal, or whatever, assistant principal, he would have been a heck of a cheerleader. Because I'm going to tell you, the guy, rah rah rah. Now, everybody here has found out now that the BVU situation was a joke, that it never was as profitable as you all were led to believe, never was as successful as you all were led to believe. Creative bookkeeping and so forth makes it appear that way. Now, what I'm concerned about is I won't be involved ever again coming in and meeting with any city council member and members of the Bristol City staff. They can send me their information and so forth, and I'll review it. But I'm saying this, open and transparent government isn't a couple of councilmen meeting with city, the people that are paid to dictate and so forth. I won't be a party to it. So that's what's going on, and it was, I was remin, it was reminiscent of the BVU days, and I'm not interested in seeing that duplicated. And that's my comment. Thank you.
All right, we'll move now to the regular agenda, to item number one. Consider the first reading of an ordinance to repeal and reenact the appendix to Chapter 70 of the city code. Ms. Crowder?
Thank you, Mayor. The proposed budget had incorporated changes in the solid waste operations. We had previously presented an ordinance that was tabled on July 12th. There's already been some discussions tonight about the work group that was established. As Ms. Marnie indicated, we did have a meeting, and part of that meeting, the work group determined that to revise the entire ordinance was going to be a long-term effort. And because of the funding that was built into the budget, the decision was made to bring forward these revisions to the appendix. So in your packet, I included the proposed appendix that was, as I say, discussed that day, and actually, the... And actually, the work on that was done by the work group as well as the existing code, so you could see the changes. There are some increases in the fees. Primarily, the residential fee would go from fifteen dollars a month to eighteen dollars a month, along with some increases to the commercial accounts. With this proposal, the code, the ordinance itself would remain. So the grass service was one of the things we discussed during the budget to be eliminated, would remain with this proposal. The only change would be the fee increases.
So that means that the grass clippings would still be picked up?
Correct.
So someone doesn't have to drive to the landfill to drop them off?
Correct.
Now, I think I heard Ms. Jewel say, were these rate increases now brought up to current rates based on inflationary movement because some of these were stagnant for a few years? Or are they still behind where they should be based on today's dollars? I'm still not clear on that.
In regards to the study, I think you, Catherine, you said twelve... So, I mean, in that regard, I would say that we were lagging. But, you know, prior to your appointment to, or your election, excuse me, to council, we did a study, not a study, excuse me, we did a request for proposals for private collection service. And as part of that, we determined that the fee was sixteen dollars a month. And that's two years ago.
So you think that these are still probably behind in most cases from where they should be if they'd kept up with price movements in the market?
I think the issue is, if you look at solid waste as a whole, it is behind.
Okay.
I think, of course, no one signed up to speak to this, but I think, Ms. Jewel, do you have some additional comments?
Nothing to do with it. I mean, I'll look at the Tennessee area for comparison rate, but you have to consider that we do a lot more.
Would you mind that?
It's hard to compare apples to apples. What that study was, a 2004 study, I think it was, I think it was fifteen to twenty. And I don't know what all, you know, we pick up a lot more. We do leaves, we do, you know, different things. I think Kingsport has like a thing for one garbage can, and I don't know what all those include. So, you know, when you look at the different types of services, I think right now, we are where we should be. You know, because I'm looking at all over, but I don't, you know, I'm not too sure. I guess leave it at this and see what comes up. But I think, I think we are, I heard Kingsport, do you know what Kingsport's rate is?
I know that in Bristol, Tennessee, they have a lower rate for the first can. I don't know the Kingsport rate, but in Bristol, Tennessee, they charge for the second can, and we don't have the ability to do that.
Yeah. See, and we don't do the, we do bulk also, and that's a big deal. So, I mean, if you take, hire somebody to haul off your refrigerator to the dump or your mattress or something, you're going to pay twelve, more than twelve dollars. Okay?
So the work you guys did, I think I'm hearing you recommending that these are correct, we should approve it as you see it, but there's more work. You want to have time to work through the rest of the ordinance.
Yeah, you know, there's, right now, the section to the code is incorrect, okay? Its citations are, there's a lot of things that probably need to be done, but once you probably would just go ahead and substitute the whole code. So that would, that would give the opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Jewel. Mr. Pollard, did you, you said you had something related to this?
Yes, I also signed up on the agenda for this particular item. My comments were more of a, initially, more of a general nature concerning the process. During the meeting, which several have now discussed, so it takes a little bit of my thunder concerning that, in that meeting, we had five different people. One presented a overall conceptual picture of where we were now and where we needed to go. One person presented the city's point of view and the purpose for the changes and the primary purpose expressed there, if I'm not misrepresenting, was that we needed to increase revenue, reduce expenses, and balance the budget. One person represented the department that was actually working with the code at hand, and he knew exactly what was going on, what the challenges were, and where some improvements might need to be made. Not so much with the financial side of things, but with the process. One person is intimately familiar with how legal documentation needs to be handled, and she had reviewed both the ordinance as a whole and not just the parts that were up for revision. And she had also reviewed the city code as a whole and also the state code. So she gave a holistic legal perspective of it. And then one person, myself, was looking at the details and the specifics of a lot of things. So in that meeting, we had a lot of different people looking at a lot of different perspectives with actually very little overlap between the different perspectives. And that gave us a very good point of view to go into the overhaul of, in this case, just the appendix, but then later on, we're going to look at the code, the section of the code as a whole. And then after this point, we have a lot of other sections of the code that we need to look at. And I think that's more than just five people can look at. I think we need to get a lot more people involved because there are a lot of smart people in this city, and the code is very long, very complex, very involved. And I know, and my understanding is, from what y'all have expressed over the past couple of months, that you are, unlike a lot of past city councils, not only willing to accept, but eager to see the input from the people. And I'm very glad to see that and very much looking forward to seeing what goes on. Concerning the specific issue at hand, now that some of the details have come up, one thing that I would like to point out is one of the more direct comparisons. A lot of people try to compare us with our neighbors in Washington County. One thing that convinced me that Catherine's proposal of the eighteen dollar a month trash collection fee is that not only do we collect more than a lot of people that charge less, but we collect more and at a much, much lower rate than our neighbors in Washington County. They use the waste management services, and my understanding is that they pay a fee of twenty-five dollars per month just for the can collection. And that makes it a no-brainer to me. We are serving people with more services at lower costs, and that sells me, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam. Ms. Marnie, you had the...
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm Nancy Marnie, a resident of the city of Bristol, Virginia. I'm a taxpayer. I do own property. Let me add something to what Michael has said and to what Ms. Crowder has said also, and Ms. Jewel, all of us. There seems to be a center core around which all of this is going to revolve. And that center core is the context within which all of this is taking place. I have used this example in this room before, and I will use it again. This is not Gross Point, Michigan. It is not Derry in Connecticut. It is not Palm Beach, Florida. This is Bristol, Virginia. Our context within which everything takes place is quite different from the three entities I've just given you. And this in itself has to have a major influence on what is done, how much is done, and how it's done. And this is going to be one of the keys, the context at the core in which all of this takes place and revolves. We are a very low-income city. We have about sixty percent of the household income is thirty thousand dollars a year or less, less. We have fifty-two percent of the households in this city with a yearly income twenty thousand dollars a year or less. Now, if we start getting what might appear to be more realistic in terms of charging extra, we're going to lose even more people than we already have because it's out of context. It's out of our context. We simply can't do it. Might be nice, but it's out of the core context. We have to function like Bristol, Virginia. I'm one of these people who has never really functioned inside the box. I've stayed outside it most of my life, but I always knew what was in that box. I just didn't stay there. And I, and we talked about this in our meeting, and that was one reason it was such a good meeting, because the people there were capable of thinking outside the box, but always realizing and acknowledging the core, which is the context within which all of this happens. It's an exciting, an exciting thing, but there are going to be problems. We may kill you all before it's over. I'll just warn you. But so what? You know, everybody's replaceable.
No worries.
But there will be problems. There are going to be hard times. We know that. There are complications. It's very complex. But it comes down to the fact the trash has to be picked up and hauled off. That's it in a nutshell. It's been done for a hundred years. Hopefully, it'll be another hundred. That's the core of that. The trash has to be picked up. So that said, we know what we've done to this point, but we also know there is a lot more to be worked out and worked through. But keep that main core, the context, in view. Keep your hand on that context. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Marnie.
Thank you, Madam.
Since, let me briefly say that since the idea of broader context has come up, one idea I would like to pursue as we go forward might be the idea of competition. For example, we, as I mentioned, we have waste management in the county adjacent to us. We've had a quote for potentially sixteen dollars a month for basic trash pickup. What if we get these two organizations to compete against each other and have better services, more comprehensive services, at a lower price? I'm not saying that we're going to wind up with that, but I think it's something worth to investigate as we go forward.
Absolutely, Mike, and that's what you call free enterprise and competitiveness and so forth. The bottom line is, we need to try some different things, and I appreciate that thought. I mean, that's what capitalism is, Mike, you know? Thank God.
Any council, anything, comment?
I just, yeah, one thing that bothers me is, and I'll say this, this is out of the context here, but, you know, realistically, the employees that are here that represent the city, I would appreciate if, you know, I can understand the citizens here pay the taxes. If they want to use their cell phones and text and so forth and so on, that's their business. But at least be mindful enough, please, of the people that they're, that pay their salaries to not be on the cell phones and texting back and forth. That's irritating to me to see it, and it's disrespectful to these people, and it's disrespectful to this council.
Good point. All right. If there's no further questions, I guess we'll entertain a motion for the first reading of the ordinance to repeal and reenact the appendix to chapter seventy of the city code.
So moved. Second?
Motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Fleaner?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Steele?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
An ordinance to repeal and reenact the appendix to chapter seventy of the city code. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Bristol, Virginia, that the appendix to chapter seventy of the city code should be and hereby is repealed and reenacted to read as follows. Appendix to chapter seventy, solid waste fees, collection fees for city services. Single and two-family attached and detached residences, condominiums, townhouses, and any other residential unit where electric service is individually metered. Each residence and residential unit will be assessed a collection fee. The city will provide a refuse receivable for each residence. Waste will be collected once a week. Fees will remain in place, and waste shall be collected while utilities are turned on, regardless if the residence or residential unit is occupied or vacant. Monthly fees payable with utility bill, eighteen dollars. B, non-residential establishments and non-individually electric-metered multiple residential units where service is provided with not more than four ninety-five gallon and/or three hundred gallon or any combination thereof, automated collection containers provided by the city. Only locations which are accessible to automated collection fees will be served. Charge payable quarterly. Number one, ninety-five gallon containers, eighty dollars first container, thirty-five dollars for each additional container. Two, three hundred gallon containers, a hundred and sixty dollars first container, eighty-five dollars for each additional container. Rates are based on one collection a week. If service is requested for more than one collection a week, additional collections shall be billed at half the rate. Elamacenary institutions. The city will provide ninety-five gallon and/or three hundred gallon automated collection containers. Only locations which are accessible to automated collection vehicles will be served. It shall be the responsibility of the institution to apply for and provide the necessary information to qualify for this category. Charge payable quarterly. Number one, ninety-five gallon containers, sixty-five dollars for the first container, twenty for each additional container. Number two, three hundred gallon containers, one hundred dollars first container, fifty-five dollars each additional container. Rates are based on one collection a week. If service is requested for more than one collection a week, additional collections shall be billed at the half rate. D, bulk wood brush or bulk waste collection for city-served non-residential multifamily locations and elamacenary institutions. Upon request, the city may provide special collection services to city-served establishments. A deposit in the amount of a single service load plus a one-ton disposal fee is required prior to any collection. Charge special collections and disposal, thirty-five dollars per collection service plus disposal fees at gate rate, one ton minimum. Service requiring more than a single load shall be considered as separate services for each load and charged accordingly. E, excess brush or waste collection for city-served single and two-family attached and detached residents, condominiums, townhouses, and any other residential unit where electric service is individually metered. The city retains the right to refuse to collect waste from residences, I'm sorry, the city retains the right to refuse to collect waste from residences where the volume exceeds the limits established in this chapter. Upon the request of the owner or resident, the city may provide special collection services to the residents. A deposit in the amount of a single service load is required prior to any collection. Charge special collections and disposal, hundred and fifty dollars per collection for excessive brush, demolition, construction, waste, requiring the service of a grapple truck or rear loader. Service requiring more than a single load shall be considered as separate services for each load and charged accordingly. Disposal fees. A, municipal solid waste, thirty dollars per ton. B, inert, rock, brick, concrete, asphalt waste, thirty dollars per ton. C, construction and demolition waste, thirty dollars per ton. Brush, thirty-five dollars per ton. E, minimum fee for A through D, except as noted in J, fifteen dollars. F, leaves, grass, and yard waste, thirty-five dollars per ton. G, bulk waste tire processing fee, tires not to exceed twenty-four and a half inch wheel size, rimless only, a hundred and fifteen dollars per ton. H, tires not to exceed twenty-four point five inch wheel size, rimless only, brought in by other than Bristol, Virginia residents, six fifty each. Surcharge for each tire on rim or encrusted with mud or rocks, example, waste stream tires, six dollars and fifty cents. J, waste tires shredded, thirty dollars and ninety cents per ton. K, Bristol, Virginia, private residence, all types of permitted waste. Number one, up to five hundred pounds, three dollars. Five hundred to a thousand pounds, five dollars. Over a thousand pounds, thirty dollars per ton. Tires not to exceed... Tires not to exceed sixteen inch wheel size, rimless only, delivered by private residents in lots of less than five, three dollars each. Three. Commercial refuse, container permit fees. A, one to five dollars and ninety-nine cents, no, one, one to five point nine nine cubic yards, fifty dollars annually. B, six to three, to seven point nine nine cubic yards, a hundred dollars annually. C, eight cubic yards or larger, two hundred dollars annually. D. Temporary use containers, one to five point nine nine cubic yards, fifteen dollars quarterly. Six, two, six to seven point nine nine cubic yards, thirty dollars quarterly. Three, eight cubic yards or larger, sixty dollars quarter. The public good requiring it and emergency is declared, and this ordinance shall become affected, effective upon its date of adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Curcio. And again, I wanna thank the, the people that participated in this process, and I particularly liked hearing the good report, that you felt it was a very good process, because it will help inform us as we move forward and look at some other issues. All right, let's move to item number two. Consider a resolution to authorize the execution and delivery of a master equipment lease for the acquisition of certain equipment for public benefit.
Mayor Hartley, Vice Mayor Steele, members of council. In fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, a capital improvement committee was formed, and the responsibility of this committee was to prepare a five-year capital improvement plan. This information was based on items that they received from the various departments. This plan was presented to council in March. That plan was used in the budgeting of FY seventeen to identify the needs that we would need to assemble in the budget. The following are the vehicle or items that were needed for FY seventeen. Five police vehicles, one Parks and Rec operation vehicle, one Parks and Rec programming, programming vehicle, and a Skid steer loader. These items will be procured from either the state contract or through a local bid process, and the total estimated project is, is about three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Due to these items having a useful life of five years and the cost of each item being greater than twenty-five thousand, the purchase will be funded by a five-year capital lease, and this funding is already in the FY seventeen budget, the payment. The resolution you have before you is required by the leasing company authorizing the locality to enter into a lease agreement.
Have any, nobody signed up, but do we have any comment in the public? Any comment from council?
Yeah, I got one comment. I know we can't do it at this council meeting, but, you know, when we go before our board of directors and ask for capital equipment, we typically, the department head who's asking for the capital equipment is present when that request is made. The reason for that, obviously, is you're asking for a lot of money. And so if there are questions about why the capital is needed, or, you know, what we've done to consider other asset resources, the department head's there to answer that. So, I'm just saying, my expectation going forward is those department heads that are asking for this capital in the future are here and present, so that we can ask them questions about the capital, you know, why it's needed, have they considered other options? So, so going forward, that's, you know, I don't know if you call that a different train of thought, but that's the way we do it in business, and that's what I'm looking forward, you know, out of the city.
And I, I concur very much, yes, very much. We need, we need people that are in the department heads, and actually, sub-heads. We need to break it down and see exactly what people do too, and so forth, and, and why we're paying certain salaries, and hopefully we'll be able to do that next year. I think it's been glossed over in the past, but we're not gonna gloss it over anymore.
I can add to that, Ms. Crowe. Mr. Curcio, would you read the resolution?
The resolution of the City Council of the City of Bristol, Virginia, authorizing the execution and delivery of a master equipment lease purchase agreement and separate equipment schedules with respect to the acquisition, purchase, financing, and leasing of certain equipment for the public benefit. Authorizing the execution and delivery of documents required in connection therewith, and authorizing the taking of all other actions necessary to the consummation of the transactions contemplated by this resolution. Whereas the City of Bristol, Virginia, the lesssee desires to purchase, acquire, and lease certain equipment and other property necessary for the lesssee to perform essential government functions. Whereas in order to acquire certain equipment and other property, the lesssee proposes to enter into that certain master lease, master equipment lease purchase agreement, the master lease and sep, and separate equipment schedules from time to time is provided in the master lease. Whereas the governing body of the lesssee deems it for the benefit of the lesssee and for the efficient and effective administration thereof to enter into the master lease and the separate equipment schedules as provided in the master lease for the purchase, acquisition, and leasing of the equipment and other property to be therein described on, on the terms and conditions therein provided. Now therefore be it, and it is hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Virginia as follows. Section one, approval of documents. Upon review by the city attorney, the city manager is hereby authorized and directed to hold executed copies of the master lease until the conditions for the delivery of the master lease have been completed to such a fit officer's satisfaction. The city manager is authorized to approve changes to any documents related to the master lease previously signed by city officers or employees, provided that such changes shall not substantially alter the intent of such documents or certificates from the intent expressed in the forms executed by such officers. The master lease shall be in such final forms as the city manager shall approve, with the city manager's release for delivery constituting conclusive evidence of such officer's final approval of the master lease's final form. Section two. Other actions authorized. The officers and employees of the less, lesssee shall take all action necessary or reasonably required by the parties to the master lease and each equipment schedule to carry out, give effect to, and consummate the transactions contemplated thereby, including the execution and delivery of acceptance certificates and any tax certificate and agreement with, each with respect to separate equipment schedules as contemplated in the master lease, and to take all action necessary in conformity therewith, including without limitation, the execution and delivery of any closing and other documents required to be delivered in connection with the master lease and each equipment schedule. Section three, no general liability. Nothing contained in this resolution, the master lease, any equipment schedule, or any other instrument shall be construed with respect to the lesssee as incurring a pecuniary liability or charge upon the general credit of the lesssee or against its taxing power, nor shall the breach of any agreement contained in this resolution, the master lease, any equipment schedule, or any other instrument or document executed in connection therewith impose any pecuniary liability upon the lesssee or any charge upon its general credit or against its taxing power, except to the extent that the rental payments payable under each lease, as such term is defined in the master lease, or special limited obligations of the lesssee is provided in such lease. Section four, appointment of authorized lesssee representatives. City manager and chief financial officer of the lesssee are hereby, each hereby designated to act as authorized representatives of the lesssee for purposes of the master lease, and each equipment schedule until such time as the governing body of the lesssee shall designate any other or different authorized representative for purposes of the master lease and each equipment schedule. Section five. Designation for purposes of section two sixty-five B three of the Internal Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six, the city shall not take or admit to any action, the taking or omission of which shall cause its interest payments on this financing to be included in the gross income or federal income tax per, for, for federal income tax purposes of the registered owners of the interest payment obligations. The city hereby designates its obligations to make principal and interest payments under the financing documents as qualified tax-exempt obligations for the purpose of Internal Revenue Code, section two sixty-five B three. Section six, severability. If any section, paragraph, clause, or provision of this resolution shall for any reason be held to be invalid or unenforceable, the invalidity or unenforceability of such section, paragraph, clause, or provision shall not affect any of the remaining provisions of this resolution. Effective date, this resolution shall be effective immediately upon its approval and adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Curcio.
I didn't hear whether the mayor was gonna make the payments if the city couldn't. Was that left out by mistake?
That was an accident.
Ms. Crowder, could you explain the time that we had all the people in the city come in front of us and ask us for these capital needs? One thing I remember was a repeater for the police department, and it was emergency because their repeater had worn out, and we had to go ahead and get that immediately, and, or they can call each other in emergencies or whatever. If you don't care to explain how many showed up?
I mean, that was during the budget workshops, we had the departments come and speak to the needs. We also, as part of the capital improvement program that was presented in March, we did have the department heads come, so they'd be available to answer questions, but I'd taken note, and in the future we will make sure we have department heads or managers, the appropriate people here.
All right. We heard the staff report, had discussion, read the resolution. I have a motion to adopt the resolution.
I move to approve the resolution to authorize the execution and delivery of a master equipment lease for the acquisition of certain equipment for public benefit.
Second.
Right. Have a motion and second. Clerk, call the roll.
Fleaner.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Steele.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
All right. Item number three. Consider a no-net-loss performance-based grant award to support Project Palm.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, tonight, we have the opportunity to finalize an agreement which will bring a True Hotel to Lot Fifteen of the Falls. The True Hotel brand is a new brand to be operated by Hilton, and this one in particular is going to be owned and operated by the Patel's, who own and operate the Comfort Inn at X five. They've been in the city since the late nineties, and we're excited to have another hotel in the city to offer lodging to the visitors and guests of the city. If you don't mind, Mayor, we do have a short video that kinda highlights the features and the content, theme of the hotel, and we'd be glad to show that. If not, we'll go right to the discussion of the item.
We'll move on, we've got quite a bit to discuss still, so.
The agreement before you tonight is the consideration of the no-net-loss performance-based grant performance agreement, and what it entails at its core is an award of three hundred thousand dollars, and in return for that award, the company, Prime Hospitality LLC, doing business as Hilton True Hotel, will provide a True Hotel concept that will entail a capital investment of at least six million dollars and thirteen employees over the term, which is five years. The way that the no-net-loss agreements work is we utilize revenues generated by the project itself to make the award over time. The performance-based piece of the award is the fact that every quarter an amount is paid out equal to half of the lodging tax that is paid to the city. Therefore, if they perform lower than they expect, that they are paid less than they, than they expect to receive. If they do better, they receive more, up to the total grant amount of three hundred thousand dollars. At the end of the term of five years, whatever they have received is what they receive. They can at no time receive more than three hundred thousand dollars. And the Patel's are here tonight, if you should have any questions.
Would y'all like to come up a minute, please? The Patel's, would y'all come up to the podium?
And when you do, just for the record, would you state your name and address, or it's in the minutes?
Samir Patel, two-three-six-eight Lee Hyatt, Bristol, Virginia, two-zero-zero-two.
Mr. Patel, you obviously own the Comfort Inn, which is now across the street from Crabtree Buoy, is that correct, sir?
Correct.
And you've been inconvenienced a lot with the Falls lately, I bet, haven't you, with the, all the traffic and so forth?
Yes, I have.
Has that impacted your business any, I'm just curious?
Yes, it has, very much, very much.
Okay, okay. Let me ask you something, sir. When you came and started the business in the nineteen nineties, late nineteen nineties, I believe that's how it was represented, and by the way, your property's immaculate, but I see it, Comfort Inn, and I commend you for that. Were you given any incentives from the City of Bristol, Virginia at the time you located here, sir?
No, sir.
Nothing?
Nothing.
So you basically invested your own funds, or you borrowed the money?
Correct.
To get the, I guess you had to get a, what do you call it? Franchise?
Yes, I have.
Okay, you had to pay the franchise, and you had to buy the lot and property and so forth and so on?
And to construct the hotel, yes.
Yes, sir. And you took all that risk on yourself, didn't you?
Yes, I did.
And you could probably do this without this, this, you would probably do this project without this incentive, would you not?
Sure.
You would do it without this?
The question is, I proposed, I opposed the idea with the partnership concept.
Yes, sir, I know that.
The partnership concept was that I bring a hotel, I have brought in millions of dollars in tax revenue to City of Bristol, Virginia over the years.
I know you have.
I also own two hotels in Abington, and I do the same in that coun, township. The concept of my business proposal was this would be a partnership between City of Bristol, Virginia and us, by me personally investing my eight to ten million dollars.
Yes, sir.
And in return, the city, my city's gonna get about four to five million dollars in tax revenue over the next twenty years, and I was looking for some sort of return on my investment. If I don't invest, invest that money in the Falls project, you don't have that revenue. I'm bringing you that revenue. I'm bringing Falls project on the map by bringing such a big franchise here, and, and I was just looking for some consideration. To my, to my satisfaction, the consideration city is giving me, or proposed to give me, it's not even what I was looking for. I'm bringing way too much with my personal money at risk at the Falls project than what I'm looking, I'm getting.
Well, I understand that, I understand that, but when you came in the nineties and started your pro, and did you ever get any incentives from the town of Abington?
No, I did not.
Okay, okay, okay. And that's how, kinda how it always was up until lately, and, you know, people start a business, and you have these tax breaks, or no taxes and so forth. You're not asking for a lot, sir, with what you've done, I'll give you that, I will give you that.
Yes.
It's just the concept in general bothers me, not what you've done, okay? You understand? Thank you. I just want you to understand that, okay?
Okay, great, thank you.
So, so, Mr. Patel, is there a, is there a reason that you're asking the city to basically give some of the revenues generated, the tax revenues, back as this grant? Is there a reason you're asking for that as a partnership? What was your concern without that?
The concern was, the hotel building, no matter where I put in southwest Virginia or northeast Tennessee, it's gonna cost the same money. A hotel building stays the same. The site, the Falls site, which we, whether you wanna accept it or not, has some setbacks. I am coming in there with my own eight to ten million dollars, I'm risk-taking a big risk there, because your leased property can come in and go. I'm investing my own money. My building, I can't take it and go somewhere else tomorrow if Falls project does not work. I'm trying to get some incentive to spend my ten million dollars in that project, or eight million dollars in that project. And mind you, I can put that building anywhere in five cities, and it will cost the same money.
So if I'm reading you right, you're basically saying, look, City of Bristol, I want you to have some skin in the game here, because I wanna make sure you're behind the Falls, I wanna make sure you continue to support that development, because if I take all the risk of putting a hotel there, and you undo that development, then all of my money is for naught. Is that what I'm reading?
That's correct, sir.
And this is just a hedge, if, if you wanna use that word, this is a small hedge against your, is that, is that a reasonable statement?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Now, do you, I've read, I've looked at your numbers as far as hotel occupancy rates and so forth, and I think they're a little aggressive, not from the occupancy rate, but maybe from the, from the days of occupants in the rooms for the year, you know, time period, but do you feel like that those are very conservative numbers? You feel like you'll out-achieve those, or you feel like they're pretty much spot-on where they'll end up?
Actually, me being, having three hotels in the area, I know what numbers should be, and even from that number, I'm taking conservative look. I'm giving you rock bottom what this worst scenario would be. I'm not giving any rosy picture here. If hotel does not live up to their expectation, this is what at least we'll have.
So have you been privy to make sure that the True Hotels that Hilton have opened in the U.S., have you, you know those numbers, so you know those are really achievable?
This is the brand, new brand of Hilton Hotels. There is not one operating right now in the country.
Is there one in Atlanta that's opening?
They are building, it's not ready.
Building, okay, okay. That's all the questions I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I think, Mr. Pollard, you want to make a comment? You'd sound up.
My concern was largely that we were not provided any documentation in advance. I mean, this seems to be a valid project and a valid discussion. But all we have was, consider a performance-based grant award for Project Palm, which, considering we're now told that it's a True Hotel by Hilton, I don't see what this Project Palm still means. Sounds like a code name like they'd use on a movie while it's still being kept confidential. Then, under that, all we have is details will be provided during council meeting. That's nice and informative to do advanced research. Anyway, that was my primary concern. I do see that Mr. Patel does have a valid concern, in that he would like the city to have some skin in the game in case they fail to properly develop the Falls. Because right now, that seems to be what's going on in the Falls. Not a whole lot of anything, considering that his business is so heavily based on what's going on nearby. In general, I do disagree with the idea of basically incentivizing somebody to do something that they would do anyway. On the other hand, the city has very poorly developed the surrounding areas. And if he is going to be one of the biggest investors in that property, he's got some risk involved if the city doesn't follow through on their commitments. Anyway, I see both sides of it. But my main concern is that we were not provided anything in advance to do our research. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Pollard, I'll tell you what. I imagine, you know, he truly got cheated. He just wants $300,000, and Cabela's got 17 million. So, really? I mean, you know, I mean, and these people have had skin in the game in the city of Bristol, Virginia for 20-plus years. So, you know, that's a small token of our appreciation to y'all, if we do that, okay?
Did you have a comment for this item, Mr. Stew?
I'm still curious about the number of rooms that we have in the city of Bristol, and what the occupancy is.
Mayor, I think, I don't have those numbers, but Matt Bolus at the Convention of Visitors Bureau probably does.
How much occupancy? What's the occupancy rate?
You can't compare all the hotels. You can't go to some Texas pride.
Could you come up and step up to the mic, Mr. Patel?
You can't go to McDonald's and find their revenue versus some steakhouse and try to look at their revenue. It's two different, two different aspects.
How did you establish there was a need?
There is never a need. There is, you invest your own dollar to make a need. There is not a need. There is not a need. When do you establish that there is a need to build a house? There is no need for anything. This is not a need-based business. This, I'm investing my dollars. I'm trying to bring this business in the hotel in Bristol, Virginia. And this is what I project that I will bring to City of Bristol, Virginia as a tax dollar. Tax dollars, and that's all I'm proposing.
And how much occupancy do you, you don't have?
I don't have it. You probably have to go, Star S T R, that's the company?
Yeah.
Who, who compiles all the, all the occupancy for all the hotels. And they might probably charge you a few dollars, but they are the ones who provide you.
All right. I think I have one more. So, I'm still shocked. So, $149,000?
Before I?
Now, did you come to, you came to us with this idea, sir?
Not to you. I went to Interstate, who are the seller of it.
Okay. So you went down the road?
And then I went to Abingdon.
Would the direct route, would you go to?
I did not know that that's the direct route.
I mean, I'm just wondering, will it pay $149,000? Because you see, that's twice as much as that, that lease thing, okay? It's, you know, what happened with the gentleman in the back? I just, I don't know. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Captain.
Any, any other comment? Any comment?
Only comment, I'll say this, you know, any vote we have up here, I want, I want the Patel's to understand, any vote up here that I, any way that I may vote in this, it has nothing, it's no reflection on you all. It's just the principle that I think this is not government's role to give money to private enterprise. You take risk. That's what I say. And I commend you all for it. I just want you to understand, this isn't personal. This is philosophically based, that government needs to stay out of private enterprise, period. And the more we stick our nose in stuff like this, the worse the situation gets for every taxpayer in this city. And, you know, what about the people that 15, 20 years ago, like yourselves, didn't get a thing? And now people are getting legs up, so to speak? You all theoretically should be able to go back and be compensated. And so should every business. This is not the way you do private enterprise in this country, and this, government's roles, and we're gonna talk a little bit more as we go along after this vote tonight and things going forward. People are gonna be made aware in this city about the lucidity, or lack thereof, of some of the past decisions, and where we're being taken right now. And, you know, like I say, please understand, this is not personal.
The reason no incentives were done in the 90s, nobody was doing them. Now, everybody is. And nobody wants to do it, but everybody's afraid to stop. Because as soon as you stop, and Abingdon doesn't, or Washington County doesn't stop, or Bristol, Tennessee doesn't stop, then they're gonna go to those places.
So?
What do you mean, so?
So?
So have no development in Bristol?
Mr. Hubbard, Mr. Hubbard, if you have to buy your business realistically, then that company probably, you know, for instance, Cabela's, if they real, if there was really a market here, they'd pony up 17 mil. And they would have bought in. They wouldn't have had to have the city do it. Realistically, let's, you know, let's be practical.
They've done that all over the country.
Well, yeah, well, let's just be like everybody else and stupid.
Well, I'm not saying that that's anything that I like. I hate it also.
Well, then don't vote for it.
Well, that's not how it works.
Oh, I'm done, man. I'm sorry, I made the mistake. And I'm, I'm just ignorant, because I don't believe government has a role, thank you, in, in financing in any way, shape, or form, private enterprise. When they start going down that path, then there's nightmares. Now, I'm sorry, I'd rather have a one rest area, or a gas station that serves fast food, and not have other businesses, Mr. Hubbard. If that one business was privately owned, and they took the risk. And, you know, we'll find out if, if, you know, we've been trying to give incentives for two or three years with the Falls, and I don't see people knocking the doors down up there.
No, and if you didn't have any incentives, they definitely go knock on the door.
Well, yeah, but if you want to buy it, then why don't this, why don't we just not do it? I mean, we can, you know, I mean, realistically.
And they say it's a nasty game. It's already been played everywhere, and.
That's a sad game.
You're in it, or you're out of it.
I don't consider spending taxpayer money and getting government involved in private enterprise to be a game. Sorry. I consider it to be a matter of every individual here, and every citizen, you know, and their freedom, and what true capitalism is. When John Smith got off the boat in 1607, and settled Jamestown, I don't think he got there and said, where's my incentive?
No, he wasn't smart enough.
No, because you know what? No. He was, he was a venture capitalist. And he didn't lie about anything on resumes or anything else either. He came over here, and he got off that boat, and he said, let's get to work, okay?
I agree with your principle. Well, 100%.
Then if you vote, if you agree with principles, you vote.
But the reality is not gonna let you do that.
If you believe in principles, and you don't vote for principles, Mr. Hubbard, and you vote because of, you can't do that, then we fall down the same path, and it's a slippery slope that we continue on to, the same idiocy that got us where we are right now. And I don't want to be a party to that.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Nancy Marnie. I'm a resident of the city of Bristol, Virginia. I own property. I pay my taxes. I see the sides of both arguments. But let me give you a good example of what Mr. Fleener is talking about. And perhaps in contrast to what we're dealing with here. We have a business in Bristol, Virginia, that is one of the most successful businesses in the entire city. The last count I had, and I'm sure it's more than that now, they hired 38 people. They had 38 employees. There were about 20 full-time employees, and the rest worked, I think, 20 hours a week. This business is the Blackbird Bakery. They did not ask for, nor receive, one penny. Not one penny from the city of Bristol, Virginia, or the state of Virginia. This information came from the owner, Carla Perkins, straight to me in conversation. And also her husband. Not one penny was asked for, nor received. That business is prospering like gangbusters. They have bought a building, they've bought another building, they've expanded their business. The way they got the money, according to the owner, Carla, to me in conversation, the way they got the money to start that business, which had been her dream, they, she sold her house. That's how they got the money to start the Blackbird Bakery. Now they're building a house. And they have bought buildings. And they are doing extremely well, and they have earned it, they have worked hard, they deserve every penny they get. In spite of the city of Bristol, Virginia, and the state of Virginia.
Nancy Marnie, thank you for that. And that's very true. That's a dream. And, and you know, you can, realistically, and everybody needs to realize this, individual choices, you make choices to go into business, you make choices where you're gonna go to school, et cetera, et cetera. Government isn't the god. It's not a god. Government is supposed to provide services, period. Not revenue for entrepreneurs to hedge their, I asked the question, the Patel's are very hon, gentlemen are very honest, I want a hedge. You can't get a bigger hedge at Cabela's, they're not even asking for that. I mean, they got no skin in the game. So, I'd rather vote principles, Mr. Hubbard, and keep government out of private enterprise. And, you know, choices. You know, they bet, this city council in the past has bet your futures. They bet it. And it's a shame. Shame.
Before we vote, one thing, I think, and probably as we go through, we talked about a lot of different things we want to look at over the course of the year. I think one, at some point, will be the general course of economic development and incentives. And probably come up with a, an economic development plan, so that, that we're not incentivizing things that compete amongst themselves or other things. So I think this is a good beginning for that discussion, and as many things will continue on over the course of the year. With that being said, we'll go ahead and consider a motion to recommend an award of 300,000 is provided for in the drafted performance agreement, and to authorize the mayor to execute any declarations or other documents necessary to close on the proposed transfer of Lot 15.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have just a minute to ask Andrew a few questions.
Sure. Go ahead, Mr. Stew.
Andrew, in the past, when these incentives have been issued, can you come up with some of the places that was 200,000, 300,000, whatever? And do they still owe the city for new businesses that went in?
You know, I can think of a couple right off the bat. Olive Garden received an incentive that completed their payment cycle. They were one that did not receive the total grant amount in the term. So they received what, what they got. And I don't have that number, perhaps Ms. Horfield does. Melon Mushroom is another one that had a similar incentive. They completed their payment cycle and received the entire award.
How about Cheddar's? Didn't they get one?
Cheddar's did receive a reward, but it was not no net loss.
It's been paid?
It has been paid.
I have a question, since you asked that question, Mr. Stew, and since you talked to Mr. Trivett. Mr. Trivett, when businesses get these no net tax issue, or whatever it is, I don't, no net loss, whatever tax incentive, does a city send a 1099 to that business? If they're not incorporated, you send a 1099. What do you send if they are incorporated?
We don't send 1099s to corporations.
You don't send, you don't send anything to the company, to any incorporated business, indicating to them that the city of Bristol, Virginia, has given them $50,000 a year in tax paybacks? You understand my question?
I do understand your question.
Okay. Do you know the answer to that? Are you basically saying that that doesn't happen?
If they're not incorporated, we are not required to send a 1099.
How many, how many corporations, or how many, how many businesses aren't, don't have the designation of not being just incorporated? In other words, how many sole proprietors and partnerships do you deal with?
We send out, on average, 150 1099s a year.
For these tax, no net tax losses?
Just different if anybody's providing a service.
So we don't know, we have no mechanism to know, if any of these incentive or advantages is these businesses that are getting a hedge and an advantage over other businesses. We don't even know if they're reporting it on their income taxes, do we? So it's very possible, since you're the CFO of the city of Bristol, it's entirely feasible that 50 to 100,000, or whatever the particular year incentive might be for the particular business, that they're putting in their back pocket.
They would probably declare it as sales tax as an expense. And they could reduce that by that expense.
Yeah, well, in other words, they declare the sales tax as an expense, but then they get it back as from.
I don't think it's up to the city or any business paying another business, for whatever reason, we're not the tax.
Oh, I agree with you, Mr. Hubbard, but I tell you what, we probably.
If they want to cheat, that's their business. But it's not our business to see if they are or not.
Whoa, whoa. Well, you know, actually, I do kind of think it is our business as city council, if we're going to vote for these incentives, to actually find out if the businesses we're getting are in fact reporting it on their income tax. You know? Otherwise, I want some of that. So, yeah, yeah, we are on different planes, Mr. Hubbard. We really are. We're on two different worlds.
I'm on the legal plane.
There's your attorney right there.
Again, I consider a motion for an award of 300,000 is provided for in the drafted performance agreement, and to authorize the mayor to execute any declarations or other documents necessary to close on the proposed transfer of Lot 15.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Clerk, please call the roll.
Fleener.
No.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Steele.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes. All right. Move to item number four, an update regarding the Falls. And, Mr. Roswell?
Excuse me. Take my.
Let's go ahead and recess council for five minutes.
Good job, Mr. Mayor.
End our recess to resume our council meeting. End our recess to resume our council meeting. Appreciate everyone giving a chance to stretch your legs. You know, one of the things, and before we get to the next two items, that we have been talking about and we'll see, I think, going forward this year, are these kind of updates and looking at different things. And we're going to start tonight with the Falls and then our financial briefing. So we'll go ahead and, item number four, have an update regarding the Falls and, Mr. Roswell?
Mayor, council, staff, happy to be here tonight. My name is Brent Roswell, I'm with Interstate Development, and we are the developer on the project of the Falls. So for my update tonight, the first thing I want to do is show a video. Because I am very excited about this hotel coming to the Falls.
It's going to be the newest product in this hillside, it's going to be a product no one has ever seen before.
We have broken the mold, and instead of just making something that existed, moved it better, we created something new.
We've completely reimagined the Mid-Scale Sector.
Hello and welcome, everyone, and on behalf of all of us at Hilton Worldwide, we're thrilled to be introducing our 13th brand, True by Hilton. True will be backed by our commercial legends, which are the best in the business and a major reason for our industry lead for over recent years. And based on what we're seeing so far, True could ultimately be our largest brand.
We've created a brand that's simplified, it's intuitive, effortless, it's efficient, it's all perfectly balanced. We understand what matters most to guests, and we serve it up in fresh, consistent, and surprisingly affordable way.
True will build emotional connection with millions of guests from all generations. Minimal, yet meaningful. That's our motto.
When you enter True, you'll be in Hilton's coffee, the hub, our innovative new hub. But it's more than that. It's a first floor experience where guests can hang out together, do their own thing, lounge, work, eat, or play. The hub of the hub is our command center. Where guests can check in, get information, buy snacks at our market, or chat with our True team, who are the heart and soul of our brand. Past the command center, you'll find the hub's main door. It's the perfect place to join in the fun, first you're on rent, and it's part of four zones in this innovative space. And finally, True's gift. It's thoughtfully designed to maximize space and comfort with the best value. It features big, warped beds, large eight-foot windows, lots of lighting, and the storage of 55-inch TV and spacious bathroom. You're there to have it, the next big thing in hotels. Welcome to True by Hilton.
One of the best, we've ever seen of any brand that I've been in the department.
I'm the same as I think, the park, time stands on all of them.
When you walk into True, your energy is colorful.
I think the guests want to come downstairs and, you know, hang out, sort of be in the room all day.
It's almost like this brand that you, you need little glories and you can be yourself.
There was already a natural transition from Hilton products to make the lobbies a little more energetic and make them more social.
The mission of the marketplace, which I believe, this particular brand, is beautiful.
A brand that we're going to see continue to scale around this type of industry in a way that we haven't seen for a very, very long time. It's where Hilton is going and it's, it's what the consumer wants.
This brand is a business. Clean line, muscular, and classy.
And as the video has shown, that's, that's why we are excited. And, you know, this is a development of regional, regional impact, and the True Hilton will be the first one in the Commonwealth of Virginia, which was one of our tasks early on. And we appreciate the Patel's for coming and the opportunity to have the Hilton concept at the Falls. And, you know, the hotel concept helps us in lowering and attracting more restaurants to the Falls, and it brings people off the interstate. We're extremely excited. Again, I'm here to update you tonight on the progress of the building that we are under construction, and we're approximately two weeks ahead of schedule. Buffalo Wild Wings contractor is already inside the space working, and we'll, we'll be open in November. And everything's going very, very smooth right now. Also on the Falls, we've got a major tenant that is onsite this week, so hopefully next council meeting, we can report on the results of this visit. Took us a few months to get them here, but they are finally going to be here this week, and very excited about that. Also, in the last couple of weeks, we have received two offers. I'm, we'll switch gears now to the Lowe's building at Exit 7. Last couple of weeks, we've received two offers on the Lowe's building. One off, one offer, we analyze the offers based on the sales that the tenant would do, and the offer that we're choosing is the one that does the most sales, because we know that that's what helps pay the incentive. So hopefully, we will have that contract signed, hopefully by next week, and in so doing so, and the tenant that we're negotiating, it's a sale to the tenant, they'll be open this year. So hopefully, that, that will come to pass. And that's it for now, unless you have questions for me.
Well, I got a couple of questions. A lot of, a lot of the issues I think in the community has been the communication of what's going on at the Falls has to be behind confidential agreements, behind closed doors, so everybody doesn't really have privy to all the information. So without, you know, getting into names, can you, can you tell us a little bit more about the interest that's in front of us about bringing extra clients into the Falls? Some of the hurdles that you're up against that's preventing clients to get interested in the Falls? You know, why would they not want to come? And what is it the city can do to try to help develop, help move that project forward? Because we are obligated now, with general obligation bonds, we are obligated in the future years to pay those off. So the clients need to come, they need to establish businesses, so the tax revenues are there to pay the city's obligations. So what needs to be done to make sure this is a positive project and it keeps moving?
Well, the, the number one thing that needs to be done right now is I need a date on the completion of the roads. That's the obligation of the city with our...
Roads within the Falls or about?
The internal roads. We have a date, we have a, we have a date on Lee Highway, and that's, we've got a date, we've notified our tenants. We have an approved real estate deal right now for a 20,000 square foot tenant, they're waiting on a date.
So the date you're asking for is the date on the road internal to the Falls that takes the traffic past Cabela's, past Lowe's, exit left onto Lee Highway, is that the road you're speaking of?
Well, the road goes beside the Buffalo Wild Wings and Freddie's, Sports Clips, and Nell's Salon that we're building, and beside the True Hilton Hotel. That road splits those two. It continues on down paralleling Lee Highway, then it would take a left hand, we have, I'll tell you what. Bart, do you have a site plan you could put up?
Yeah, that would be helpful, if y'all could bring up a map.
We do have a site plan, just forgot about it.
Um, you're building a Nell's Salon and a Nell's Plaza, does that generate any sales tax, does that look like there was a certain, a certain kind of service?
Well, when you build a shopping center, you, there are certain services in the shopping center that people want. So we want Buffalo Wild Wings, we want Freddie, we want their sales. But we also want a lot of shoppers. So you have to have all services in a shopping center to attract the public. To answer your question on how you tax services, someone else would have to answer that.
Yeah, there is no tax on labor in Virginia.
There's no tax?
No.
So this doesn't generate anything?
It generates traffic. In other words, it gets people, another reason to go out there.
So, so the wife...
Trafficway.
No.
It's all theoretical.
Don't mean to disagree, but if, it's, you know, if the wife is in the Nell's Salon, the husband's at Buffalo Wild Wings.
That's assuming, that's assuming that they go together. I mean, you know?
Well, you know, if, if, yeah, but that's, that's the general feel. We want, we want to be, we're a development of regional impact. If you're coming from 150 miles away, which they do for Cabela's, we want something for the whole family, and that's what we're trying to create here.
Do you have statistics? You just said Cabela's, you want, you want to be a regional developer and so forth and have people come from this region, and you just threw out Cabela's, you know?
Absolutely.
Okay. You have statistical data to support your, what you're making a representation here at this council? Do you have the data to support, you know?
Cabela's publishes data, and going back early on in the process with Cabela's, their market draw, Drew, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the market draw that Cabela's pubs read is approximately 150 miles.
Well, Cabela's realistically is principally a catalog, that's their principal source of money.
50 million dollar, over, projected over 50 million dollar sales at the Fall is not catalog. In fact, it's the horse.
Projected, projected, that's a good word. And what's, what's, what's been the actual to date? I don't use words of the future, I'm talking about the words that are actually going on.
Well, let me tell you what, first of all, Cabela's is not going to share with me their actual sales, but we will tell you that we do talk to cashiers, we do talk to managers, we do know that their projections right now are over 50 million dollars. You guys get the sales receipts of what they've actually did, we're not privy to that. You guys are privy to that information, we're not. But we do know that Cabela's is the horse in the industry, such as Lowe's. I'll give you an example on Lowe's. Lowe's was doing approximately 52 million out of the Washington County store, then they opened the Tennessee store and the Abington store. Sales went down to about 35 million. Now they, that was in an 80,000 square foot store, which was the last store in the company of that size. Now they built 100-plus thousand square foot store in Bristol, Virginia, and is projecting to do over 50 million. Does the Lowe's guy give me the report? No, but I've done Lowe's deals for 15 years. So the projection of Lowe's and Cabela's, you're talking about 100 million dollars in sales. You take any shopping center in the region and look at their total sales, they're not going to be what the Falls has already, and we've got a lot more to develop. So I'm excited about the Falls. I'm excited what the city did. I'm excited for the next 35 years, the sales tax incentive the city receives, and we have the horse leaders, we have Cabela's and Lowe's.
Are you a resident of the city of Bristol, Virginia?
I am not. I'm a property owner, I am a property owner of the city of Bristol, Virginia. I pay tax in the city of Bristol, Virginia. And I don't mean to be argumentative, but I, I've heard a lot of...
I don't care what you're doing. I mean, you know, I mean, you don't have to apologize to me, I'm not apologizing.
I'm saying, I, there's been a lot of, I'm here because I'm excited about this deal. And with the interest we have, and right now, what does the developer need from the city for the Falls? Mr. Mumpire's original question is, we need the roads completed per our agreement. We have an approved 20,000 square foot tenant right now, and they're waiting on a date for us.
What have you tried to do to, who, who, who have you talked to? What's the problem with the road? You know, that sounds good, what's the problem? No, no money?
There is no road.
Well, she, she's waiting on a road. I mean, what's the problem? Why can't we put a, why can't we do a road?
You would have to answer that.
The city has to do that, that's part of...
Well, why haven't we done it?
It's called money.
Okay, that's right then, bing. We, now we know. Bottom line is, you're saying that you've got a tenant for a 20,000 square foot building, but the problem with that tenant coming here is we don't have a road there. Is that, yes?
The tenant's coming, they're waiting on the date for the road. They're not here now because the road's not built.
Well, you just heard, Mr. Hubbard, we don't have the money to do a road. So what do you do with the tenant?
Well, we'll, we'll discuss that at the next item on the agenda.
Oh, okay. There's always a look forward to the projected, whatever.
Hey, I'm hoping that you're going to give me a date for the road.
Well, I ask the question for a specific reason. We have to make the Falls successful. I hope everybody in this room understands that. From a business perspective, we have to make the Falls successful. This project has been nothing but negative in the news from the get-go. We got to get past that. We have to move on and make this development positive and successful. Our tax revenues are counting on it, and our general obligation bond commitments are counting on it.
That's the money.
So we have to know, the source of my question is, we have to know to be responsible, to make sure this occurs so we meet our obligations. We have to know what the challenges and hurdles are that the city council needs to make sure we do, so we don't turn clients away, we establish an environment to where clients want to come and place their businesses in the Falls. So I've heard the road, and so now I need to know a date for the road and what the specific is the city needs to do, just provide a date and which road.
The, the road that we're talking about, and I'm trying to highlight it, is the road in red. This is, the, the green area is the phase that we're working on now, which I had mentioned earlier that we have a tenant coming this week. Most of the tenants have already, that you see, the boxes in the green have already been here, but we're still waiting on one, and they're here this week. So we know the Lee, the date of the Lee Highway Road, the date of the Lee Highway Road pretty much sets the date that this development can happen.
And what's that date?
I believe it's June of 2018.
June of 2018?
Yes.
How long's this project been going on?
That's VDOT.
The Lee Highway VDOT project.
The whole Falls project, how long's this thing been in the pipe, the whole work? Five years?
I don't think quite five years, probably three, three years.
Okay. Okay, and we're talking a couple more years now, counting 2018.
So the June 2018 is VDOT's date.
Yes, and what we, when we talk to the tenants about getting them open before that date, as you heard Mr. Patel investing 8 to 10 million of his money, these guys also are investing their money, and they don't want to have a grand opening with Lee Highway being tore up. So the timing of the, the timing, I'll, I'll even make it easy, I need the roads June 8, I need the roads in June of 2000, by June of 2018. It doesn't mean that we can't start construction before, but when, when public comes in, we need the roads by June of 2018.
So if the city figures out a way to make sure that red road you're showing there is in place and completed by June 2018, then your clients are going to contractually commit to coming to the Falls.
Well...
Is that what I'm hearing?
Somebody said no. Who said no?
I said no.
Well, let them answer the question. That's my question, is that, is that...
Well, in theory, yes, we have one, we have one client that has gone through Real Estate Committee and proved it, we have several more waiting on a date to do it, and yes, we believe to the best... Well, in theory, yes, we have one, we have one client that has gone through Real Estate Committee and proved it. We have several more waiting on a date to do it. And yes, we believe to the best of our knowledge that that is correct, but we, we're not the tenant. There is a real estate process, as some council members know when they went through the Lowe's and Cabela's process, but yes, we believe that is correct.
Has that client signed a letter of intent?
Absolutely.
So they've signed a letter of intent?
Yes.
And they said, we will contractually bind, that we will take the next step to build our business if you give us a date on the road?
Well, that's not the only contingency.
Okay, what else?
The, the other contingency would be, who else is coming with me?
Oh, whoa, whoa. So in other words, they got a, yeah.
Well, anytime that you do a deal, you, you, you've noticed that generally in a shopping center, you don't see one tenant out in the middle of nowhere by himself. And that's kind of the issue with the nail, the nail salon and the hair salon, or Sports Clip we were talking about. Tenants want to be with each other. Shopping centers, that's what they are. You go in a mall, there's lots of tenants. They're contingent on each other. That's the nature of the game of shopping centers.
Well, what, but let me ask you something, will you, let me, the nature of the game, but my question is to you, if it's contingent on somebody else coming, and that other company says, I'm not coming, and they're not part of the same parent company, I mean, you've said you've got a letter of intent from one company, but that, and that contingency says, but I've got a-
Hold on, I, I've got a letter of intent from several companies, and yes, in those letter of intents, they'll name specifically who they want with them. And they may also name, we want two of the three tenants. And I'll give you a hard example. They want Cabela's to be open, which we've met that contingency. And a lot of the letter of intents will say, we want Cabela's or Lowe's. Some of them may say, we want Cabela's and Lowe's. So they'll, they'll give that parameter, then they'll say, with what you're getting ready to build, we want these tenants too. Give you all just a little bit of history, and Mr. Flainer, I know you don't know me or our company well.
Anderson, I don't know who you are, though.
We, we've developed 3 million square feet of shopping centers. We've developed three target centers, one center over a million square feet. We still own over 2 million square feet of shopping centers. This is what we do. We don't do residential, we don't do, we're not a realtor. We're commercial shopping center developers. This is what we do. We have two full-time construction managers, we have in-house counsel, we manage 27 shopping centers on the eastern U.S. This is all I know, this is all I do. And these leases are contingent on each other, and you do have to put them together, and you do have outside factors beyond your control. One of my factors beyond my control is Lee Highway. Lee Highway has to be built or they're not coming. So I have to have an assurance that Lee Highway's being built. I have to have an assurance that the street in front of their store is built. I mean, they're, they're not coming if you don't build the street. And, and Norm, you know, I can't control building Lee Highway.
No, sir.
But that's, that's how a shopping center, that's how everybody's shopping centers develop.
Well, you have the commitment, VDOT, so I mean, that's, it's not like, well, maybe it's going to be-
No, no, we've got, we feel good to, um, to have this assurance, we've got a schedule from VDOT, we've shared a schedule with VDOT with our tenants.
Didn't you all have the country club, your, your company?
We did.
You did?
Yes.
Okay. If you're a developer, and I'm not a developer, so pardon the ignorance of some of my questions, why can't you just take over the construction of the roads that feed the state road and put that in your control? Why does that have to be a city-controlled item that we got to say, the road will be done by June whatever, and we don't really do roads for business, as they say, we make it, we miss it, whatever? What's your take on that?
Let me give you, well, beyond the contractual obligation that we have with each other, let me give you some other factors. We are in a community of 40,000 or so. Our market, we're not Knoxville, we're not Chattanooga, our markets are not that large. So the tenants we're talking to, to incentivize them to get here is, we've got bare bones rents. We're not getting the rents that we're getting in our Morgantown deal and our Huntington deal. So, you can't just add cost to the deal because, what you're doing is adding the cost to the tenant and the rent he's paying.
Well, beside the fact, the city's already agreed to pay for the roads.
Right, and we have a contractual relationship with the city that's-
To add to that, beyond the roads, is there anything else that we're contractually obligated to provide? Or, or basically, would this then end our part of this and put everything on interstate?
Well, I, I, we've got an attorney here, my attorney's not here, but, you know, our agreement contemplated the city doing the grading and, and the roads, and we doing the development on the parcels. Now, we've agreed to, once the city gets the roads done, that we would take over any remaining grading that needed to be done. And, and I'm, you know, I'm, guys, we're a team. And I want to throw, since this has been brought up, I'm going to throw out one other item, as far as a team player. On the two offers of the Lowe's of Exit 7, one of the offers is $500,000 more lucrative for interstate, but they're taking the other offer because it's more sales for the city. And again, we have done that because we are a team and we've been with you all from day one. On this agreement now, if you read your development agreement with us, you're responsible for grading. Theoretically, you would have a lot more cost. We've agreed to take that over. We just want the roads done. Again, guys, we're, you know, we're a partner.
And let me, so basically, what, if I understood what Mr. Hubbard's saying, we don't have the money? If I understood correctly, we're getting the money to do these roads?
Yeah, we can borrow it.
Oh, okay, oh, okay. So we basically, we, we undercapitalized this project to start with, it seems like. Well, we misconstrued, the prior council that got, projected all this in 2000, whenever it was, obviously misconstrued, not only the business climate, but misconstrued how much money it was going to take to finalize this project. Is that a fair statement?
Well, I'm not sure I'm the right person to answer that.
Well, you're the developer, and you've got 27 properties and this, this, and this, so, you know, realistically, sorry, you're the person.
I don't know the city, I don't know the city's borrow capacity, the city's financing capacity, I don't know what your revenue is.
What would a project like this typically call, cost, bear? If that, that land, when you first were, if you were a partner with us from jump?
It's, it's, it depends on where you're at.
I'm talking about that rock place up there that we brought it down to the size of a, whatever, you know?
I'm not sure, are you asking me what?
I'm asking, how much?
Did it cost?
How much would it have cost? Would you have done that project on your own?
Well, yes, I would have done that pro, if you give me 35 years of the sales tax that the city's getting, absolutely. You, you, guys, this is a 35-year deal. Lowe's and Cabela's will do $100 million in sales, and you're going to reap the benefit for 35 years.
Yeah.
You can't, you can't look at it in year one and say it's a bad decision. A year, and I know I'm preaching to the choir, but-
Yeah, you are. If you, if you, if this were year one, I would agree with you, but this isn't year one, sir. And we're, and we've got revenue bonds coming due, and we don't know, and we don't have but two or three stores up there? And one apparently we're getting?
Who cares how many stores you have, if you have 100 million in revenue? You've got more revenue than most shopping centers.
God.
Excuse me, it has happened. They're up there, they're open, go shop at them. You're looking at number of stores, you're not looking at sales.
I'm a shop owner, this is my business.
You, then obviously you talked to the wrong person.
Well, you obviously, you obviously, maybe she has talked to the right person, you haven't, because you said they're not going to share with you the numbers, now somebody, you know, I mean, I don't want to argue with you, in fact, it makes me ill.
And I apologize for it, boys, but guys-
But I don't agree with you. I don't agree with you, and I mean, I, I don't, didn't agree with any of this stuff. Too many assumptions, too many projections, and this, I, I don't, I don't, I don't know you.
You're collecting sales tax receipts right now, those aren't assumptions.
And they're not, yeah, okay, but they're not keeping up with, on that, most of it on that disaster. So I'm not, you know, I don't, I'm a team player too, but I'm a team Bristol and the people of Bristol, period. I'm not a team interstate, okay?
I, I don't appreciate the comment, Mr. Flainer.
I don't. Like I said, I don't care.
That's very disrespectful, and I think that we should all be doing for the good of Bristol. If you're a team player for Bristol, you should be wanting what's best for Bristol.
I think I want to be here when it's, when, when we're going to have to do what a team player would do.
Does anybody have any more questions for Mr. Roswell? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, council.
We appreciate the update. All right.
I'm out of here, Bill. I'm out. I've got to go.
All right. Next item on the agenda, the, the financial briefing by Davenport and Company, and Mr. David Rose is here. Mr. Rose?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Y'all should be getting a copy of my report, and I'll just wait a moment, and I know we've got this up on the, on the screen in a moment, okay? Okay, let me see if I can just, okay, let me just go backwards a second. All right. Again, thank you, appreciate the opportunity to be here, as, that's not-
That's not?
That's not it at all, that's a wrong presentation. It's for Richmond, Virginia, which I'm sure you'd love to hear, but it's already been given.
Oh, no, not another school.
I'm sure Mr. Alvis and Mr. Ritchie would probably enjoy that, but located just one block away.
Let's see if we put up, and who, uh, do we have another one?
I didn't have it. Yeah. I did that last evening, that's what I have.
We were told you wanted to hear another presentation first, because you've had so much time.
Just in case we're-
I don't know how many pages that is, but I know it's not small. Hopefully this will be, hopefully we'll be getting you the right presentation, if not.
They have the topic, you want to go ahead and get started?
Okay. I will get started then. We are presenting tonight, or I am presenting tonight, a financial overview on the city. And having said that, it covers a number of areas, one of which is your credit rating history, a summary of the financial history going back since prior to the 2007, 2006 timeframe. Little bit about your tax anticipation note history, we'll talk about that. We've also done some peer group comparatives, some peer group expenditure comparatives, looking at your existing indebtedness, some people I'm sure want to know about that, like to clarify that. Talk about the unassigned fund balance, which is your rainy day fund. And then finally, talk about 2016 fiscal year that ended in June of this year, where we stand projected in 2017 and 18, both years, based upon the work that's been done by your staff. So it's a lot to digest, Mr. Mayor. I will move very quickly, because if we should get the right presentations, it's about 45, 46 pages. So, having said that, what we did on page four is, we looked at cities throughout Virginia that had populations between 10 and 25,000, all of which had some credit rating history. And as a result of that, all of which, by the way, had credit ratings that were investment grade. So, I'll just tell you right up front, we did not include the city of Petersburg, which is having considerable difficulties right now, and we've been brought in to try and help that situation as we speak. We do have it on, the presentation is there, so let me see if I can move it along. Is there any way to, is that formatted, I'm saying, Ken, is that? Okay. All right. I guess it's just, is there any way to get it? What's that? Okay. All right, sorry, folks. I'll try to do my best. So, goals and objectives here is to try, again, to brief you about the history, and as I said, a number of those things that we're going to hand or discuss. So, credit rating overview. I mentioned the peer group here on page four, some somewhat up to date, and you can see we did it throughout the state. On the next page, you can see the history, this one from Moody's, and the next page will be for Standard and Poor's. You'll notice where Bristol stands, you're on that lowest end of the investment grade category. Martinsville is there as well. And then if you go to the history of Standard and Poor's, frustrating, sorry, you'll notice that both yourself, as well as Martinsville, Manassas Park, you find yourself in the A range, one notch higher. So Standard and Poor's actually has you, considered, and they're quote, not ours, strong, and then again, the others are either very strong or at the very highest, which is the triple A. Yes?
If you will break that, you can see the picture.
Okay. So should I ask him to move the page? Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. And I can certainly, by the way, Mr. Mayor, make this report available after this evening to anyone and everyone, if it's, if we can pass it along.
Yeah, I think that would be good, and we probably would want to post that on the city's website.
Absolutely. So, we assumed you'd want to do something.
One question, just out of curiosity, looking at this while we're, we're waiting. Why does Martinsville, Radford, and Salem not have S and P ratings? Is that uncommon, or?
Um, it's not that it's uncommon, but historically, most local governments have at least one rating. We like to see most local governments have at least two ratings, it gives some balance. And actually, there's a third rating agency, which is called Fitch, and we rarely see that with municipalities of this size. But if you were talking about a municipality as large as Fairfax County or Richmond, you'll typically see three ratings. So again, a little bit tied to the size and the recurrence of what they do. Okay, if you want to continue to move on?
He says, do you have your?
Oh, now I have the ability?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. So, again, you'll notice there, we just showed Moody's and S and P, essentially, Fitch being the most recent of the rating agencies, few if any have it, doesn't mean somebody doesn't, but by and large is what we have. So your credit rating history, Moody's has had two downgrades since 2010. In 2014, we moved to the lower end of that A range, which is considered strong, and then in 2015, before, some of the things that you've corrected, and I'm going to talk about that, you were downgraded again. We have subsequently spoken to them. We feel like, given some of the things that you've done, and I'll just give you a sense of this right now, both 2016, you were operationally structurally balanced, and in 2017, the fiscal year that you approved that budget, if the budget indeed moves forward, as discussed in a few moments, that will be a second consecutive year of structural balance. So we think you're moving in the right direction. You'll also see a number of other things that they have cited as weaknesses, moving in the right direction. Some of the things that won't move in the right direction overnight is that high debt burden. Clearly, we're not going to pull any punches. The city has a very significant debt burden, in part from historically, your landfill that you've had that goes before all of you, precedes all of you and all of us, that is a very significant amount of indebtedness, operationally wise. It also costs the city some serious dollars operationally versus budget in some of those years subsequent to 2010. And then finally, the average wealth levels, they're below in this area, that's really something demographically, it's not going to change overnight, as you well know, and you'll see that a little bit later. So those are a couple of things that draws back. Some of the things, again, at the time, that they made some of their observations was, again, use of fund balance to balance the budget. They also talked about structural imbalances a couple of years ago, that's not the case right now. Use of the tax anticipation note, you'll see that's come down dramatically in the last year or two. So we feel like, in a moment, we'll get to this, there are some very positive financial So we feel like, in a moment, we'll get to this, there are some very positive financial trends. We also know the margin of error the city has is very limited. Don't want to kid ourselves. And I know that you made some very difficult decisions in the 2017 budget that you just recently approved. However, some of those decisions, we believe ultimately, are helping you cash flow wise. And we'll talk about that in a moment. So...
So before you get into that, a couple of quick questions for everyone's benefit.
Yes, sir.
So the credit ratings, why do they do them? And why is it important to the city?
Okay. Credit ratings are important because the credit ratings, if you think of it this way, they are basically a gateway to your being able to borrow money, refinance money. And every city, whether it's the size of Bristol or the size of New York City, all needs access to the credit markets for any number of reasons. And so the better rating that you have, the lower the interest rate that you can command, the better rating that you have. So for the interest and the debt that you have outstanding, if you can get lower rates, it makes refinancings, when rates are good, that much better. So...
So it's important that we raise our credit rating for a couple of reasons. One, we have some general obligation bonds out due in a few years in the future. So if we restructure those bonds to refinance that debt over a number of years, the interest rate we pay on that refinancing will be directly impacted by this credit rating.
Yes, sir. On top of that, when you look at businesses that are thinking about either expanding within your borders or new businesses coming in, they want to look at the credit rating. The better your credit rating, it's a proxy for a stable government. And that's important. So again, we recognize all of that. It's important to have a strong credit rating. We can't say that enough.
So before you get off the credit ratings...
Yes.
What do the services look at to say, these financial policies are strong? These indebtedness levels are healthy? You know, what are the key things they look at to say, credit rating is high versus I'm going to downgrade you?
There's four factors. I'll call it the four food groups, if you would. Not necessarily in this order. But one factor is what we'll call finances. That's what you have control over every year. Meaning, do you or do you not have a structurally balanced budget? And what we mean by that is that you're not relying on one shots. You're not relying on, for example, sale of land to somehow make the budget work because that was presumably a one-time item, sale of land. So that's the first thing, finances. The second thing is debt. Debt levels, debt service. And that's important. We'll talk about that. We know your debt levels are high. But again, ultimately, depending upon how the second and third phases of the Falls project work, and I'll talk about that, that will be directly impacting how people will look at your debt over the next five to seven to eight to 10 years. And you'll see why I say that in a few moments, Mr. Martin Barrow. The third piece of that is going to be the demographics, as I said. What about the region, the overall wealth factors, the overall health, not just of Bristol, but the greater region? And when you look at where you've been, you look at the last several years, you're talking about the overall coal industry that's a periphery to you, has been struggling. It's on its wane. We know that. That has impacts. We look at the region, though. There's been other positives. You look at what happened at Eastman Chemical. They've had large improvements, large investment. So you get some offsetting factors. But again, in the greater scheme of things, the demographics, the overall wealth factors, that's sort of the third thing. So we've got finances, demographics, we've got debt. And then finally, when you look at all this, as I said, sort of the financial factors of what you've done structurally, budget-wise, as I mentioned early on. So you pull those things together and hopefully, you get a sense of what they look for. And they may break some other little categories, but those are basically the areas, if you would. So with that said, you look right here at your history of your unassigned fund balance. That's what I'll call your rainy day fund. At one time, that was called the undesignedated, but the various accountants nationwide changed that to a different terminology from undesignedated to unassigned, all the same. So you'll notice here, I don't know if this clicker will work. Let's see if this works. Yes, it does. You'll notice here that it was healthy. It dropped down in that 2014 timeframe. Went back up in the 2015 timeframe. Projected 2016 actually will be a little bit higher. You'll notice here that you have a city policy that's going to be upwards of 12%. Solid policy. You're moving now in that direction. And that's important. So again, you're moving from what was some difficult times here, you're moving back up. And that's a very, very important thing. So what I did on the next several pages, on pages 10 through about 13 or 14, is tried to give you a summary of what happened each fiscal year, or roughly each fiscal year. And then what did that mean to the unsigned or undesignedated fund balance? So back in 2006, basically, the city was relying on those tax anticipation notes. And you essentially had no fund balance. You had no rainy day fund. You were down at zero. So in 2006, we worked with the city to develop a multi-year plan. We talked about converting from one-time tax collection to twice a year. That's more typical of what you see throughout Virginia. We also recommended that you do a combination of revenue increases and moving to expenditure cuts so that, again, you could raise that undesigned or unassigned fund balance. By 2007, you did those things and you ended up with a $4.5 million fund balance at the end of '07. Remember, this is prior to the economy turning down in '08 and '09. So again, you were in a mode when the economy nationally was going strong and you had no fund balance. So you were actually running counter to the trend of local governments in Virginia. 2008, the plan continued. As a result of that, by 2009, your fund balance moved up modestly to about 4.7 million. And then, of course, the economy hit, it crashed in '09 into '10. Yet a number of things happened. You used some of your fund balance then, about $1,006,000. One of the things that really hit you was the municipal landfill. Again, that was hitting you. Again, some of the revenue reductions in terms. And again, you had some planned use to reduce the tans. But again, you did do some structuring. We did some restructuring. So the good news is by 2011, you actually moved back up to the $5 million mark in spite of a very difficult economic environment. Then in 2012, the city looked at that. You were able to further reduce your tan. Your fund balance went up to almost $6 million. And at that point in time, to look at, from the previous city manager pulled in the concept of the Falls, again, not going to get into why, but we did point out here that we understood that one of the reasons for that was the recognition that there was going to be a bleed of some $2 million as a result of the sort of the withering of the Bristol Mall. And the Falls was in part a reaction to that. So 2013, the city once again found itself looking at having to adjust. Its actual operating revenues were exceeded by expenditures by $1,006,000, primarily due to the solid waste fund, some other things. As a result of that, some of the undesigned or unassigned fund balance was used, but still a solid number. At that time, you started to do some of your interim borrowings for the Falls project. You are today at about $47 million, give or take, of interim financing. And I'm going to talk a little bit about that in a few minutes. I'd like to just continue and do this presentation and then address it. Happy to answer any questions. So that said, again, I'm happy to answer any questions y'all have or if you want me to address the audience. But I think, if I could, Mr. Mayor, the reason I say that, I think it's important and helpful to get the whole of our presentation. And then we can certainly drill down or add to or try to explain things. So happy to answer that.
Continue.
So in 2014, as you can see there, as we said, we were needing some real estate tax increases. There was an unforeseen loss, again, in the landfill of $1 million of revenues. That was a hit. So you take some of those combinations. You realize we added in some of that debt, interim debt. And we find ourselves, or found ourselves, with an unassigned fund balance that went from 5.3 down to 2.2 million. And again, at that point in time, in and around that point in time, our rating was hit by the folks at Moody's. Standard and Poor's did not drop your rating. So 2015, you took some corrective action. The previous council did that, raised real estate by six cents, factored in all of the various dollars as it relates to the 47 million or so that was actually borrowed. And so the good news at that point is the unassigned fund balance actually went up to over $6 million. And you did a number of things. On top of that, you'll see in a moment, that your tax anticipation note actually went down significantly. So again, with your increasing fund balance, your liquidity was better, your tan went down. That's what we like to see. So that segues into this. And I've got to say, you know, in effect, a picture's worth a thousand words. I think you could see it here graphically. As the overall difficulties continued from 2012 up to '14, your tan rose. But as you started to make some of those difficult decisions, incorporate the debt, doing again, some of those tax increases, you can see here, in 2016, your tan is basically a fraction of where it was just two years earlier. And that trend, we understand, is continuing and expected to continue here in 2017. And I would, again, I can relay that and ask the CFO, Kim, to talk about that. But again, it is in the right direction and that's critical. I wanted to point that out. So you can see how dramatic that's been, the improvements with a structurally balanced budget that you've got that happened in 2016. And we'll be here again, short of something very significant that we don't know about. We just started 2017. But expect that to be structurally balanced again. Okay. If I could, for a few moments, move to some peer group demographic comparatives. Wanted to show you this. I'll move kind of quickly. But we wanted to let you see, as we mentioned, the relative population sizes that we looked at between, again, that 10 and roughly 25,000. So this is that group we compared you to. You can see that you're basically right there on the average. Unemployment, you're just slightly above the average. I'd point out, the state's average, as we understand it, is also 4%. The national average is at 5%. Again, it changes every month, but this is as we understand it. And you can see, again, the highs, Martinsville in that area, Hopewell, then down to the lows of Northern Virginia, Falls Church, Fairfax, and you've been there. It's right there. I don't know what to do to help you. I don't have that ability. I'm sorry. Okay. All righty. So then, as I said, demographically, you can see where you are from median household income. You're considerably below the average. And again, you can see what part of your challenges are, one of the things that those rating folks look like. You're above Martinsville, about equal with Radford, below Hopewell, and again, accordingly. Poverty level, it goes as high as 32-plus percent. Once again, the average is about 15%. And you can see where the city of Bristol is, almost 22%. Real estate taxes, the average was about 106. You're in there at about 119, at about 119. And you'll notice here, again, some of the folks are considerably above that. Interestingly enough, Falls Church, while very wealthy, has a very high tax rate. They do a number of things, but you can sort of see that. Okay. So we wanted to show you some expenditure comparatives. Again, a big pie chart, not going to go over that right now, but you can have it. It'll be on the website.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
What fiscal year is this data for?
Right there on the bottom, what we did, Mr. Mayor, as you can see right there, is our sources. We tried to use the most recent CAFERS, which would be, at the time we did this, the 2015 CAFER. And occasionally, it's a 2014, depends. But think of that for you and for others, the 2016 CAFER is not due until the end of this calendar year. So the 2015 CAFER is, for all intents and purposes, the most relevant, the most recent, I should say. Not relevant, but also relevant, most recent CAFERS. And to a large extent, we use that. There's an instance or two, 2014 is what we had to work with.
Thank you.
So what we then did was to let you see what the peer group average was for various major topics. And then we wanted to show you Bristol. So for example, the peer group average, and again, this is not perfect because not everybody has the same exact pieces in general government. So if, on average, it's about 8.7%, you are about 5.8, the way you characterize it. So you are slightly below the peer group average. What you'll notice, though, is public safety. You are basically about 3.7% higher. We attest that primarily to the fact that you run your own jail. A lot of these other folks are in regional. The other couple of points we'd like to make, education. It's about 26% with the peer group. You're about 17%. So again, you're considerably below that average. And that's something that's important to point out. However, on the flip side, your parks and rec are right there. Your capital projects, the way you do it, you tend to spend some more on capital projects. That's not necessarily, as we view it, Falls debt. That goes to debt service. And interestingly enough, right now, the way your debt is structured, you basically spend a little less than 8% of your budget in debt service. It is about 8.7% with your peers. However, your total debt levels, relatively speaking, are higher. And we'll point that out in a few moments. So again, this just graphically shows you. What we also did, Mr. Mayor, members of council, is we incorporated not just Bristol versus the governmental funds, which is sort of what everybody else does, but we said to ourselves, if we were to throw in your solid waste enterprise fund, because it's not self-supporting, we threw that in again. Why did we do that? Again, get you a sense of the overall budget and see how you compare. Again, notice here, someone like Colonial Heights Judicial Administration, we tried to find out why. We think, we think, they just did a very extensive courthouse project. That may be demonstrated within that. Cannot say for certain. We don't work with Colonial Heights. We do work with a lot of the others, but don't work with them. Again, public safety, you can see where you are, very strong in that area, above the average. Public works, pretty much on average. Health and welfare, not surprising. You start looking at a number of the folks that tend to be, tend to be a little bit more needy. But then again, look at Martinsville. That is the most financially challenged, and yet their health and welfare is a very low percentage. So again, not sure all of this is as helpful as maybe we'd hoped for, but it's at least some relative comparison. Education, though, clearly, we know, we're on the lower end. It's not surprising to see someone like Falls Church, Bacosa. They tend to be wealthy communities and they spend a lot on education. We do work with both of those. And they are both at the very highest rating. They both find themselves in the AAA category. Parks and rec, again, you can see where you are, kind of in the middle. Capital projects, again, the way it's shown as part of your budget, that's very solid. solid. Some of these others don't even reflect capital projects. It's not to say that Fairfax doesn't, it's just the way they show their budget. And so again, not a perfect comparison, I want to spend a lot of time on it. But here, we did want to show you, to the extent we could find others that had solid waste enterprise funds, you can see here where, for you, the sheer magnitude of dollars is considerable, much larger than the others. And of course, that's one of those things that has been weighing you down when we take a look at the overall city. That said, let's talk about, if I could, indebtedness. So this is what your portfolio looks like. I think someone in the audience had said, have about 103 million of debt outstanding, that's correct. And you can see, it's basically in the form of two parts, essentially. Of the 100 million, if you would, before you get to the agreement with Washington County, basically, it's a little bit more, 53 million, that's your long-term indebtedness. A goodly portion of that, right there, is your long-term bonds tied to solid waste. It's a big number. The others are for miscellaneous purposes. And then the other portion, the short term, about 47 million, as I said earlier, that's the interim financings, and you'll see that primarily in that gold color, and you'll notice those two spikes. That is to correspond with when the interim financing comes due. And you may say, well, why is it set up that way? And it's a shame that one of the council members left early, because had they stayed, or had that individual stayed, what you'll find is that when this debt was originally set up, the whole concept, as we understand it, with regard to the Falls project, was this. It was going to take about five-plus years to see phases one, two, three, and four ultimately reach fruition. Phase one, essentially, has just been, in a sense, in the completion stage, roughly right now. And the goal then is to have, as this gentleman before me started talking, about seeing new development come on over the next three to four years, so that in a roughly 2020, we're now, again, here we are, we're in 2016, just finished that, we're starting 2017. So over the course of the next three to four fiscal years, to see what indeed occurs, because here's the way to think about this project. In 2021 and 2023, five and seven years from now, those big pieces of debt, that roughly 47 million, will then be termed out, if you would. That's been the plan for the several years now. That 47, or roughly 50 million, let's round off if we could, that 50 million, and being termed out, will be somewhere between four and $5 million of annual debt service that will be the responsibility of the city. What we're looking to is phases two, three, and four, to basically cover some, hopefully all, if not more than, that four to $5 million. And while I'd love to be able to say here, we know today that those revenues will be sufficient, we're not going to know that, you're not going to know that unless someone tells us that with a crystal ball for several years. That's the frustrating part. But as phases two, as phases three, and ultimately four, if there is one, come in, the goal here, and the old projections, were that those numbers, and these are not my projections, mind you, these are projections by your various revenue experts, it's not me, those numbers will be in that range, if not more, than that four to $5 million. Only time will tell. It'll be dependent on any number of factors, which we do not control. But again, I want to point that out, because I understand in listening, and again, I'm sorry, Councilman Kleener had to leave, but the point here is, this has always been, short of the very beginning, when the project was first conceived, to be a one-time, get it all done at once. It quickly became apparent, as we understood in this project, that it was going to be phased in. So again, the first phase, just so we understand, those dollars in the first phase goes to the debt that the city, by and large, does not have responsibility for. It has a modest responsibility for that first phase of about 6 million. Those revenues are clearly adequate to cover that. It's actually up over 27-plus million of debt that's outstanding the first phase. By and large, that is not the city's responsibility. The phases two and three, this roughly 47 to 50 million range, is your responsibility. And again, the way in which it gets ultimately taken out will be a factor, as you asked, Mr. Mumpower, of your credit rating, of the cash flows at the time. Now, one more thing. Do we have the potential, if we want to, to take out some or all of that now, or over the next few years? You do have that potential. That's the city's prerogative. If there's a potential to do that, we'll evaluate that, look at that, but the goal has always been to make sure that we know a whole lot better than we did a year ago or two years ago. Hopefully, that's why it's set up. In 2021, the vast majority comes due, and in 2023, the other portion comes due, all so that the phases two and three can actually occur, or what can occur, over the next four, three to four to five years. So, looking at your debt, your total to assessed value, it's a high number, there's no way getting around it. That's just your sheer debt levels, which accounts all that 103 million, relative to the overall assessed value, the taxable assessed value of the city. And again, that's a high number, that's one of the things that hurts, rating-wise, that's not going to change anytime soon. But, second critical ratio is this debt service annually. It's as part of your budget, as you can see there, you're actually below the average. That number that we talked about, so less than nine, or eight or nine cents on every dollar of your budget goes to debt service. And that includes the interest that you're currently paying, that goes to debt service. So you're actually in a relatively favorable position. So the key then, and I know I'm giving you a lot, is what will this look like when we term out the debt? And we won't know that effectively if we don't term out the debt until 2021, 12, 2022, 2023. And again, when you do term out the debt, and it could be anywhere in the four to $5 million range, again, depending on interest rates, prevailing interest rates, the question will then be, how many dollars does a city have coming in from phases two, three, and four, if there is one, to offset that four to $5 million? I hope that's what I'm trying to say to you tonight. Don't have that answer? You won't have that answer next year? Won't have that answer the year after? That's why the interim financing was set up in the way it is, purposely giving you time to have phases two, three, and potentially four do their thing over the period to the end of this decade. One last thing here, a payout ratio. Basically, give you a perspective, your debt payout ratio, you pay out almost 60% of your debt in 10 years. The average, you could see there, we like to see it in that range of about 60%. A lot of these local governments are very, very strong in their payout ratio. Again, if we're in this range here, we're comfortable, just so you know. What that means, to give you a perspective, is if you are a citizen and you have a 30-year mortgage, basically, after 10 years, the average person will have paid off about 25% of their debt in 10 years. Interestingly enough, local governments, including Bristol, do more than twice that level of payout. You pay out, again, almost 60% of your debt over the next 10 years. Again, if you were a citizen, average, you'd be at 25%. So again, the reason for that is that you're constantly having new capital projects unrelated to the Falls that you're going to have, be it for schools or other things. So the key is to try to pay your debt off more rapidly than we would do as citizens, and that's the important thing. Lastly, second to last, unsigned fund balance. Again, this is really just some more about how you've moved up. The projection for 2016 will be better than that. We like what you've done, and that sort of segues into, in a moment, how you look relative to your peers. Again, the average for Virginia is somewhere in that 12% range. That's why our policy is talking about getting you to that average. Some folks, like Williams, who we work with, extraordinarily high. The reason for that is their economy is heavily reliant on tourism, and in a given year, if something happens with basically Busch Gardens, or whatever it's now called, they are looking, a lot of their dollars are tied into that. Also, they are a college town, heavily reliant on students, so they like to see that move up higher. So there is a, there is a reason, a method to that madness. So my last section, I know I've been talking a lot, and I apologize, but there's a lot to provide you. So, the 2016 budget preliminary results. And you may say, why is it preliminary? Again, because this is not yet audited information, that occurs as we speak. You basically haven't even closed the books yet. That occurs over the course of the next few weeks, typically, local governments close the books in middle August. You then have your auditors come in, and again, you present to the state by the end of the calendar year. But preliminarily, the good news here is you're looking at a surplus that will add to fund balance for the moment in the $300,000-$500,000 range. So that's what we call a structurally balanced budget, and that factors in all of that interim debt that we've been talking about for the, for the Falls project. Now, we had hoped upfront, when you created the budget, to do $900,000, but again, some factors have cut to that, so we're basically looking at something about half that, could be a third of that. But the important thing is, the way you set up that '16 budget, you built that cushion in, and you built it with the idea of growing the unassigned balance. That was very, very solid. You did a number of other things, and you raised your taxes five pennies. Let's not kid ourselves, you did some difficult things, but by doing all that, you moved in the right direction from a financial perspective. And I know, nobody's elected me, probably no one would elect me, but the point is, as a pure outside finance person, you did those things that the marketplace, the rating agencies likes to see. So, that brings us to 2017. You did another increase, you did some other things, of course, right up there, and you made those tough choices. One of the other things that you did that has been embedded in this budget, and the debt service is incorporated, but needs to be, as I understand it, formally approved with regard to the year that we're in, and that is, there are certain capital needs that are upwards of almost $3 million. They are tied to investment in landfill, I believe, some closures, some other investments. We are estimating that a $3 million financing would occur. It would be financed, going back to that 10-year payout ratio, it would only go out until 2023. So it's basically about a five-and-a-half to six-year borrowing. We've used a 3% interest rate, and that, again, we think, we hope is on the high side, but won't know until we go to the marketplace. And the important thing here is that if indeed you do that, that allows you to keep that unassigned fund balance strong, and also, if you were to do some of these required capital needs, which need to be done, if you don't do that, you have to basically do an additional equivalent of 15 cents on the real estate tax if you don't do that borrowing. So we are recommending that you do that. We think that's the right balance, and it keeps you still within that legal debt margin, which I jump over very quickly. Your legal debt margin is a little over $8 million. This would keep you and remain a little over $5 million in your debt margin. Now, is that a lot of margin? Of course not. But again, it's something that is able to be done. So with that, again, the 2018 budget, we know we're just one short month into the 2017 budget, but importantly, if indeed those things are done, we like the way in which you've looked at the 2018 budget, because when you did the 2017 budget, and in, in being consulted with and talking to your staff, which really has done an outstanding job, in our opinion, and I've been here, and I've been in front of your board council years ago, and I didn't think staff had done an outstanding job, and, and made that clear back in '06. The realities here is, we see yourselves moving in that right trajectory, and would think that, short of surprise, could happen, 2017 should also be structurally balanced and moving in the right direction. With that said, happy to answer any questions, and again, if this young lady has any questions, maybe whatever, I can, I can try to answer that, it's your call, Mr. Mayor, Council.
Thank you.
Take questions from council first, I think.
I've got one, that involves the roads. Mr. Rosal, if we borrowed all the money so you could finish all the roads in that project now, is that an advantage, or is it borrowing the money too far in advance of your being able to have that accomplished? I'll get to the payback later, Dave.
When you're talking with tenants and bringing tenants to town, they want to, they want to know, they want a commitment. We can't bring them down and say, well, the council may do it in the future. We have to say, the council's going to do it, here's the date. So on my end of the world, I want it committed as soon as I can get it committed.
For the whole road setup?
Absolutely, because it, we, you know, we don't want to be...
I mean, if we put in the roads the way they're on the map now, is that going to interfere with businesses coming in, say, we want to change the property boundaries, or?
We've got it designed to allow for the biggest box to accommodate.
Okay.
So we, it, what you would do for us by putting all the roads in, we could do some of the smaller uses, out parcel users, restaurants, they would be good to go and not have to wait on the stuff behind them. So it's an advantage to us.
Do we know the, do we know the estimated cost of the, of the road completion that you're talking about?
Well, the, the map showed 2.5, but I think we were looking around 3 million.
2.5 to 3 million.
Yeah, we, you'd have to borrow 3 million in order to end up with 2.5. Everybody takes a chunk out of the bonds. And with the bonds we're going to have to get anyway, isn't it cheaper to put them all into one offering rather than doing some now and then waiting two years and doing some more?
Well, I would say this, that's, that's really two factors. One is, interest rates today are, are very favorable. Second, there would be economies of scale in terms of not doing effectively two, 3 million dollars.
Bunch of little ones to do one big one.
You, you would save on the issuance costs and other fixed costs.
To some extent, I think, I think you would. And then I guess the last point is, you do have, that legal debt margin would allow for that all to be a singular credit, meaning be the full faith and credit of the city. And so, it can be done that way. Yes, sir.
I just think we've got that obligation, and in order to take away any, as many objections to coming to the Falls as we possibly can, that we probably ought to go ahead and borrow the money and finish the project up. Yet, another $3 million, 47 million, 50 million. By saving money on that, we're going to jeopardize the 47 million that we're going to have to start paying on. So I think it's, if it's feasible, I'd like you to run some numbers on that as soon as you can, to see what, another $3 million, so we're looking at $6 million borrowed.
I would, what I would do with, with your blessing is, is counsel with staff after What I would do with your blessing is counsel with staff after today's meeting, talk about certain assumptions, see what the numbers that they're talking about, and then we certainly could get back to you on that at the next meeting or what have you. I think we want to move forward, as you heard, we want to move forward, at the very least, on the other pieces that are normal, regular expenditures that any government would have, and that's part of, again, the idea of that '17 budget anyway, so we'd like to do that.
And I volunteer to tell Doug Fleener what I proposed, so he can take it out on me.
Dave, how soon can you get those numbers back to us?
I think we'll, obviously, I would defer to, you know, we could talk in the next few days, and I would think we'd have something in a week or so, or a week or 10 days, I mean, something like that.
Yeah, one question I've got, you know, you showed the short-term and the long-term bond obligation debt going out, I think, '20, '30 and beyond. So as you look at that, you, obviously, the city has done a fairly decent job of paying off its long-term debt obligations, and that paydown is pretty aggressive after 2020. So what do you feel like the right timing is for that short-term debt obligation that we're facing at the Falls to consider refinancing a portion of that, if not all of that, that's remaining that the Falls isn't covering, to spread that out on the relief we're seeing on the long-term debt obligations?
I would say this, rates are so favorable right now that if we could somehow garner a very strong credit rating, I would want to go forward today and do that. If we knew we could borrow at a rate that was in the double to triple A range, but we can't, we can't. That doesn't mean there aren't some possible opportunities out there that we'll continue to explore. That won't slow down this other question that y'all had with regard to the 3 million or the other $3 million. I just want to point that out. We have, your staff has already asked us to start thinking about, you know, could there be something that could be done today? Because we are looking at rates that are in the 40- to 50-year range lows, and it would be a wonderful thing. Now granted, again, we don't know how successful or unsuccessful phases two and three would be, but we would try to, if we could do something, structure it so that there would be minimal additional impact in the early years. And then, again, try to have it ramp up as expected in the '21s, the '22s out, you know, onward. Because like you said, Councilman, the city has done a good job on its existing long-term debt, that other 53 or so million. That in itself gets paid off rapidly. So we have that ability to strategically layer in this other, some 47 or 50 million, especially if a goodly portion of it is going to be coming from new incremental revenues from phases two, three, et cetera.
I was going to say, the point, and I think we've may have had this discussion once, but you talk about new incremental revenues, and basically, we're looking at a timeframe of five years, five to seven years, that we're going to see an increased 45 million potentially in debt service. Does that, do you understand that correct?
So what I'm saying is, let's assume no early refinancing occurred. So in 2021, I think it is, and then essentially, 2021's the big piece, 40 million. So in 2021, that 40 million is due. Those interim payments that we've already budgeted in our '17 budget, in the '16 budget, in the '18 budget, that comes due, because that, by the way, is a fixed interest rate and a fixed amount. We know that from now through 2021. So at that point, we would then term out, as we call it, as expected, that 40 million. And that 40 million term out could be over 20 years, 25 years, 30 years. That's a decision that we, meaning council, would make. At that point, part of that, and this is my answer, Mr. Mayor, that debt service would be, to a large extent, that burden would be then looked at versus what are the revenues coming in of those phases?
I guess my point is, you were talking about the revenues coming incrementally, that we need to be anticipating in five years that we're going to have increased debt service. And so we need to start setting aside those revenues as they come in, either a combination of new revenues or cuts. I mean, but start anticipating that so that everyone in the audience and people say, how are you, you know, you know this is coming. And, you know, anybody's ever heard me talk, will tell, one thing I believe in is planning as much as you can, and I understand sometimes plans can go awry, but this is something that if we don't do, then shame on us. I mean, we know this is coming, and so we need to anticipate it as much as possible, while there may be a lot of variables and a lot of things. And so as these revenues come in, we need to, I think, and this get into a lot of what Councilman Mumpower was saying, have policies and procedures in place to keep those revenues set aside so that when the time comes, we can deal with that. And I think it would solve two problems in the midterm. In the short term is, as we're setting those revenues aside, they would go to the unassigned fund balance, which could also help build that up.
And I would say, absolutely, that, again, that would be the ideal. And I think what we would recommend, I think staff would totally, is thinking along the same lines, we're all saying the same thing, is at some point annually, we would want to have a report to the citizens, of course, to yourselves, it's all one and the same, that says, okay, what type of incremental, meaning what level of incremental revenues are we actually getting? And then number two, what do we forecast over the next, what might be three years left, you know, two years left, one year left, as it evolves? So that will help all of us figure out, relatively speaking, how successful is phases two slash three, or whatever you call them. I'm not, that's not my expertise, I'm just, you know, meaning, these next new colors that are up there, that this gentleman, his firm are working towards. The question is, are they bringing in very little? Are they bringing substantial? And how's that whittling away at what you'd ask me, which would be, okay, if we think annual debt service is going to be about $4.5 million, just go with me for a minute, how much are we, how much are we chipping away at that? Or are we over and above that? Do we plan to be over and above that because some very good things have occurred? Or are we going to shoot below that mark? As you said, we might, if we're $1 or $2 million, it looks like we're going to shoot below that mark by $1 or $2 million. We need to be planning three to four years out to know that.
Well, and I guess my main point is that as these revenues come in, they come in incrementally, the expense will be in that one year when we refinance, and we need to make sure that we've anticipated that, and don't just wake up and say, oh, this year we got to start paying that. We know we're going to have to start paying. We don't know the exact amount, we don't know the exact date, but we do know that it, in four to five years, it's going to go up. And so we need to start preparing for it.
Right, so it's in basically five to seven years.
Five to seven.
That'll happen.
And David, if I may, you know, Mayor, we agree, and that's something we're going to look at with next year's budget. And I'd also just like to make sure that everyone knows, in terms of having access to the revenues that these businesses are producing, that's the commissioner of revenue. That's not something that city staff has the direct access to. So, I mean, David, that's a good idea, but we have to have the cooperation of that office.
Well, I think we've talked about it before, we're going to have to challenge the commissioner of revenue, because the revenue projections that we're talking about are critical to the next five to seven years of the financial health of this city. So he has to figure out a way. So it's not an option not to figure it out, we have to figure it out. Now, whether we go to investors and investor relations, and we look at Lowe's and Cabela's and all the people that go in there, and what the history had been of those businesses over the last 10 years, including startups, we have to put some reasonable projections together. We have to know, are we, are run rate in line with our tax revenue to hit that obligation in 2021? Are we missing that shoot by 50%? Because if we're missing it, we can't wait till the time comes to say, oh, we missed it. Shame on us.
Right. But again, I couldn't agree more, and I think we're all saying the same thing, but I just, I know it's maybe not easy in this environment where, again, my city, we have a very large project that, in Richmond, big brewery, the city's given some considerable incentives, and we won't know if that project is worthwhile for also five to seven more years. And that's frustrating to some folks that want to see it immediately be successful, but we just won't know that. That's the way this, that agreement was struck. So it's equally frustrating, but that's just the nature sometimes of these very large, complex projects, they just don't all of a sudden, year one, say, hear anything.
Another question I had is, on the revenue side, you know, we've talked about, the city creates revenues in several sources, real estate taxes, sales taxes, et cetera. Are you able to identify for us any areas of opportunity where the state code allows taxes and revenue generation in certain areas, and we've just ignored them, or decided not to do them, or anything of that nature?
You know, we started talking internally about, there is basically about 17 different sources of either revenues or enhancements to get revenues, okay? And I think that would be a sort of a follow-up, if you wanted presentation, I think we'd have to work towards getting a little bit more definitive for you, meaning for Bristol, but we can do that.
Well, I just want to wrap up and say this, you can tell the tone of the questions are this, we got to understand our revenues and where we're going. We got to understand, are we maximizing our revenue intake? And what's the run rate over the next seven years? And then, on the cost side, it's pretty easy. Are we in line, so all this metrics you showed, are we in line with the median income and per capita basis on the cities of our size? Are we overspending or underspending our budget? And so there's going to have to be some tough decisions made. We have to be financially fiduciary, responsible, and tight with our money on the cost side, and we have to make sure our revenues hit where they got to hit, right? Because we can't be talking about a problem hitting these obligations in five years. That cannot be a discussion.
I couldn't agree more, absolutely, sir.
Ms. Jewel, if you, you did have a question, if you could keep it very brief.
2011, that you put up there, I didn't see any fluffing, but that's not according to where the authority was created, when we dumped 70, some millions of assets, and we showed that.
Are you talking about, with BVU?
Yeah.
Okay. So the thing about that is this, when BVU was created, if you will, and the city saw that assets moved away over to there, that doesn't impact, didn't impact your cash flows. So when we talk about that unassigned fund balance, think of it this way, let's assume if we're fortunate, we own a house, and on that house, you happen to have, let's say, a little guest house, you know, and that guest house, let's say your house is worth $50,000, that guest house is worth $10,000. You've given away your children, they up and they move it, it's gone. So you've lost $10,000 of an asset, your value, maybe $50,000 before, $60,000 before, now it's $50,000, right? But the point is, you then get a monthly income to pay for anything, including your house. And let's assume your monthly income is $1,000. It doesn't change, $1,000 hasn't changed because you got rid of that piece of the property.
Your seller's here to borrow, and how fast you make your maximum cash change, because your assets have decreased.
Well, that's a good point. So what basically happened is you also got rid of, you had some debt tied to that BVU. So that also came away. So it's sort of like, it's sort of like a, how do I say, sort of one side's a positive, one side's a negative, kind of wash itself.
I think to address your point, and you can correct me, Mr. Rose, but Ms. Jewel, that the assets were non-taxable to start with, that what your debt is all based on your taxable real estate value, so it wouldn't really matter.
I don't, I don't know the exact answer to that, Mr. Mayor, but I think you're probably correct, but I can't say with certainty right now. But I think my point is, is that, again, from our perspective, as your advisor, it didn't change your cash flows. It didn't change your liquidity, it didn't give you more or less revenues. Now, I do recall, at the time, that there was some negotiations tied into how much, let's say, the city would get, had historically gotten, from, from the, we'll call it the utilities department, in terms of dollars. That was a number that tied to, I think it was TBA or something, as I recall, I wasn't involved in it. But the point is, you were getting a bunch of dollars a number of years ago from, I think, TBA, and contractually, that went down big time around that time.
Yes, but that's the Chinese, if you step back to 2001, that's probably due to the, the other thing is...
It wasn't due to that, but, you know, because that was, that was ending, that sort of ended irrespective, as I recall.
Yeah, okay. The other thing is, what has been the impact, or has a written impact, when we looked at Fitch ratings, were BVU reported, okay? You look at the ratings, and the ratings directly decreased in the last, in 2015.
Right.
And the reason for that was because of the indictment?
No, it had nothing.
It says on Fitch.
No, but you, we're not rated by Fitch, that's Fitch for BVU.
I don't know, but what I'm saying is, did this happen to you on the ratings?
No, if you look at, again, you're talking about two different ratings. BVU, or BVU, I have no doubt, that definitely, but we're talking about the city itself now, okay? That's what I'm saying. So the city itself, the reason I believe, and you look at the reports, they're all public, public reports, is because, again, you used that fund balance, you had that losses in terms of expenditures were greater than your revenues, in large part because of the solid race, kind of not bringing the revenues that it hoped for. But that's separate from...
Well, and that's separate, what I'm saying is, it made a point of saying how it grades over to this city, I mean, it's, it's in that early looking at all, so they have these questions, and that's the question I had, is does it impact, has it in any way impacted, well, it's not written down, but I have to... But, you know, does that impact the, because it did drop some of the points.
I don't think so, because, again, if you look at the two reports, first off, standard reports never change your rating. They haven't changed your rating since 2010. So that obviously hasn't changed. Now, this doesn't mean that they're not having elements of concern, but again, their elements of concern have been in part alleviated, if they would take a look at it again, by virtue of the fact that you've been bringing the TANs down, bringing your fund balance up, and you've got structurally balanced budgets. So I like where we're living there. As for Moody's, when they dropped it down, they made some of the comments, but none of those comments, as I recall, had any, did not make any comment about BVU and indictments or anything like that.
Under your...
And the rating didn't drop till 2014. It was A1 in 2010, it didn't drop to A3 until 2014.
Or the city, right.
And at that point in time, the Falls debt was on the books, and that's where all the downgrades had come from, and no buildup of funds, which is what...
David, we've been in meetings with Moody's and S&amp;P, and you've been there with us, and I don't believe that's ever come up.
It is not tonight, no.
Just from one of the parts, because, you know, when they talk about, one is the long-term impact, certain activities on, you know, like in the board, one of those long-term impacts were to Fitch, because then the indictment, and I didn't know if they were still over to the city, that was our question.
Okay, thank you. One, two things to follow up, unless anybody else... One, Mr. Rose, we'd appreciate it if you could think of, and one of the things we've been trying to do, is come up with good financial management policies to put in place, like we have with the goal of the unassigned fund balance. Anything that you could recommend back to staff or council to consider going forward would be greatly appreciated. And the other is, if you would speak very briefly to a point, because I hear it from a lot of people about the city's financial crisis and how it's related to debt, and as you pointed out, we're moving in the right direction related to two things, you know, getting off the TANs and building up our unassigned fund balance, and implementing structurally balanced budgets, budgets that are, you know, where you don't use one-time money to pay recurring expenses. And as I mentioned, and you might mention to the audience, a true, what a true city in crisis looks like, given the example of Petersburg and how they...
Well, again, I will, I'm involved with that now, and so Petersburg, for example, we wrote a report, this is all public information, we wrote a report in 2012 that showed they had no fund balance, they were at zero, and that, and they actually were in negative mode. And it just languished, the report, and here in 2016, their TANs had gone up, and the bank that was providing that TAN said they would no longer provide that TAN coming into 2017, which just started. And they knew that going back several months ago. We did a report that was not public, that showed they were in deeper crisis, and the banks deserted them. And so as a result of that, they called in the state, and they asked the state to help out. and they asked the state to help out. The state did a very public report and it was presented by the Secretary of Finance, Rick Brown, who's been working in the state for forty years. And he outlined, and they brought in state auditors internally, it worked for about a month and a half, and showed that the city had a backlog, essentially away from that unassigned fund balance of zero, they had a backlog of almost nineteen million dollars they owe. Just to make it clear for your city, you have no backlog of dollars that you owe. Have no backlog. To the contrary, they added nineteen million dollars that they don't have the wherewithal right now to pay, and they're also going to have a difficult time meeting payroll because, again, they have no TAN access for the moment and they have no fund balance. Neither of those situations even remotely hold for you. So that's a tough situation in Petersburg. They brought in another firm with our support, unrelated to us, to help them dramatically amend their 2017 budget, the one that's now all of five, six weeks old. And they are being told by the state that those budget cuts on a budget that's basically a hundred million dollars may have to be upwards of fifteen million dollars. That's an extraordinarily significant number. I think you'll all agree. Interestingly enough, their problem is not debt. They actually have a modest level of debt. So they didn't get in trouble by virtue of debt. That may be the case in places like Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, or, or Indiana, or wherever the case, I don't want to work those places. But in their case, they had a very bad imbalance when it came to structural balance. That's not your problem. As we've talked about, you're going to finish probably with three to five hundred thousand dollars to the good. They, last year, the state figures, they will finish, they finished 2016 by their estimates, seven and a half million dollars in the red. So I think that's as difficult a city as we've seen. It's a tough problem. Virginia local governments are not allowed to go bankrupt. They don't have that option like they do in other places. My sense is for them, council will do whatever they do. We may need, may or may not be involved going forward, but they were going, they'll need to do a combination of revenue increases quickly and/or dramatic cuts, or, like I said, a combination. It's hard to imagine, but that'll be their call. So that's, that's.
Well, and, and like I say, I appreciate you pointing that out, and the differences between the city and, and the Commonwealth that's in a true crisis. I think sometimes people don't understand that. And again, I appreciate you coming in, and if you could follow up with those items, we'd appreciate it. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Before we move to the next item, I do, I guess, make sure it gets in the minutes to, to recognize that Councilman Flainer left before the, Mr. Rose got up and gave the financial briefing from Davenport, just so that is reflected in the minutes. Okay, now we will consider a motion to go into executive session pursuant to section 2.2 dash 3711 point A, point five, Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended. Discussion concerning a prospective business or industry or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business's or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community, unannounced business, and pursuant to section 2.2 dash 3711 point A, point one, Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended. Discussion and consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body appointments. I have a motion and a second.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Mum Power, second by Councilman Steele. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Hubbard.
Yes.
Mum Power.
Yes.
Steele.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes. All right. By roll call vote, council members will certify that only business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements specified in the motion to convene the executive session were discussed. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Mum Power.
Yes.
Steele.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes. All right. Item number seven, consider appointments to the Industrial Development Authority.
This time.
Yeah, I would recommend Paul Conco.
Paul Conco.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and second for Paul Conco. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Could you tell me who made the first and second?
Mr. Hubbard made the motion. Mr. Steele seconded.
Okay, thank you. Hubbard.
Yes.
Mum Power.
Yes.
Steele.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes. All right. Item number eight, consider a resolution to recommend and support project circumstance. Mr. Trivin?
Well, this time I would recommend that you ask Dr. David Olive to come to the podium and explain the project.
Mr. Olive?
Thank you, members of the council. We appreciate this opportunity to express our interest in pursuing the Virginia Intermont College campus to bring revitalization of educational programs back into this community. We appreciate the invitation to look at this opportunity to be a partner along with the Community College, the Higher Ed Center, and, and to become an active player in the development of a workforce here in this community and the entire region to ensure that the workforce is ready and prepared for manufacturing and other industry. We are willing to bring a, a engineering program that helps bring the higher level learning needed for advanced manufacturing. We have reviewed and are very familiar with the study that was commissioned by the Virginia Tobacco Commission on advanced manufacturing and the importance that it has to southwest Virginia and other parts of more rural areas of Virginia. And being able to attract business and industry relies heavily on having an educated workforce. And we see ourselves partnering with our educational partners who are already here in, in this region, who are delivering advanced manufacturing education at the community college level. And we believe that working together with them and bridging the middle of certificate-related programs all the way to an engineering program is going to be very beneficial for the community and for this region. We also envision this campus not a recreation of what Virginia Intermont College once was, although we certainly want to carry on the legacy and history of that fine institution, nor do we want to recreate what is currently in existence at Bluefield College. We want to take this opportunity to create a STEM H campus, one focused on science, technology, engineering, math, and health. We already are delivering health education and some STEM-related courses in Bluefield. We'll continue offering those programs in Bluefield, but there will be select programs in those areas that we will immediately bring to this community, one being related to our, our Health Sciences Program. We are also interested in building off of engineering to make sure that we're looking at the computer sciences, cybersecurity, and other types of programs that are high demand jobs at this time and for the foreseeable future will be. And so we want a campus that's responsive to the needs of the workforce for the employers that are here in the region. And we believe that we can be here and be an excellent partner with the City of Bristol and other entities in making sure that the Virginia Intermont Campus, its life is brought back to it and that students and faculty and staff are once again there on the campus, creating a living, learning community that will certainly benefit this community in more ways than just the dollars that would be generated from the economic impact of those activities, but the richness of what an education institution brings to communities. So we thank you for the opportunity to consider this proposal and we will certainly answer questions that you might have.
Well, explain a little bit to, to the public, the type of curriculum. So if a person goes there, the student, are they going to receive a bachelor of science in engineering? Are they going to receive associate's degree in engineering? Where are we on the scale of the degree program?
Yeah, it's a bachelor's, because again, the Community College here, Highlands, has a wonderful program, a pre-engineering program, which is a two-year program. I've already spoken with Gene Couch, the president, and he is very excited about this potential opportunity that we have. We are already in articulation with them on several programs, like our nursing program. This obviously would become another specific program that we would articulate with them so their graduates would immediately be able to continue their educations here in Bristol. Gene shared with me, a number of their students have to travel, obviously, to continue their engineering studies. He thinks it's a wonderful idea that there would be a campus with that program here in the immediate community for those who are already studying and living here and to be able to continue their educations at home and, and many of them with jobs already and being able to continue maintaining those jobs. We envision not just the delivery, though, of, of a bachelor's degree or master's degree. We also see the importance of certificate programs. And we have built one already in Bluefield around our, our business program and it's a certificate program in entrepreneurship. And so the entrepreneurship certificate are credits that someone can begin taking. At the end of that program, they get something for it, a certification of having studied. But they're also amassing credits that if they choose to, either then or at a later time, to then pursue the bachelor's degree, it's all sequential. And we would envision that working out well with engineering and other programs that we would introduce here. We'd also envision working with the high schools here in this region to help ensure that there are future generations that are looking at STEM H careers. Right now, as a country ranked against other countries around the world, the United States continues to lag behind in young people who are pursuing STEM H careers. And what that creates for our, our communities is, one, young people who do have the education, if the jobs aren't in the local community, they're moving out. And you can't recruit industry here if the workforce isn't ready. And so we feel like this aspect of this approach with STEM H is going to address many of the educational needs of the people in the community, but also help address the ability to attract businesses and industry here. Strong communities certainly make for strong employment opportunities for their citizens and a, a strong citizenry makes it for a great community. And we want to be a partner in that endeavor in helping to strengthen not only this community, but this region that we call home of southwest Virginia, and certainly as close as we neighbor to Upper East Tennessee, being a volunteer myself, that we certainly want to open the doors to all in this region who would want to come and study at the Bluefield College at Intermont Campus.
Dr. Olive, I appreciate that and, and I agree with a lot of what you say about the workforce. I hear that from a lot of different people, from the school board and, and the officer out the community. One question to add to that, is it just educational delivery or will there be any potential for research? I know that could have a big impact in attracting industry and if you have that, not more than just the workforce, but actually having ongoing research?
Certainly. And I think certain programs align very well for research. And while I, I am fully aware at Virginia Tech, for example, within their engineering programs, there's quite a bit of research that's being generated. Our engineering program isn't going to be what is offered at Virginia Tech. This engineering program is really delivered at that student who is academically qualified to be in the engineering program at Virginia Tech, but they don't get in because of limited seats. And so because we are not state-funded, we're not going to bring the resources that Virginia Tech can bring to their engineering program that allows for the, the further research. And they've got doctoral programs in engineering. That, that's not our goal. Our goal is for that individual who wants to be an engineer to be trained and to be able to go out and get a job right upon graduation and enter the workforce. And, and so that's the type of student we're going to be targeting. And as we've done research on this aspect of introducing an engineering program, a number of schools like Bluefield here in recent years have been introducing engineering programs. And their general education programs with emphasis in mechanical or electrical, whatever the, the specialty or the focus might be. Where I envision research really occurring for us here in this community is going to be associated more with our health and sciences programs.
Well, and there's a lot of opportunity in that as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Particularly depending what the health systems decide to do. I know that's one of their main focuses.
Absolutely.
So what specifically are you asking Bristol Virginia City Council to do to support your project to bring the school here to the VI campus?
The proposal that you have before you enables the college to secure notes being held by the two secured loan, lending banks to Virginia Intermont. That was a conversation that took place Friday of last week. That was the proposition placed before the college. If the council wants to invest in, in additional funding of the grant, that assists another avenue of Bluefield College purchasing the property directly from Virginia Intermont College. With that, the purchase would alleviate the liens that are held by the secured debtors or the, the lien holders, and it would enable the college to pay some of their preferred or priority creditors. And so that ultimately will be this council's decision. The college is prepared to go either direction. Certainly, we have deep sympathy and understanding for Virginia Intermont, what they're attempting to do, and to make the very best transaction as they can to try to settle outstanding obligations that they have.
So the resolution that's in front of us was passed by the Bristol Industrial Development Authority and given to us.
Yes, sir.
As basically a recommendation that we support a proposal to present a grant in the tune of four point five million dollars.
Yes, sir.
Right?
Yes, sir.
Which would come from the funds that are earmarked through the BBU Authority, which is under contract with the TBA contract that allows five hundred thousand to be earmarked every year to support economic development. So.
That is our understanding.
So what you're asking is that five hundred thousand, it's already earmarked every year on BBU's budget, to then be outlaid over a nine-year period, which makes up the four point five million to support the project?
Yes, sir. That, the proposal before you, that is exactly our understanding of, of how that would, would transact. And we also are quite aware that this is also subject to approval by the BBU Board.
So you're prepared on the grant to have provisions or terms of the grant for performance-related execution, number of students, when you're going to operate, how many students you'll graduate over several years or what?
Yes, sir. Yes. That, that has been. Yes, that has been shared with us by city staff and we are in agreement with...
And you've looked at those numbers and you're 100% committed that you can execute those numbers, that you can deliver those students with those degrees and those time periods? I mean, I'm not an educator, so...
The information we received had total number of students. We can definitely deliver total number of students. What I'm not quite committed to say is that they will all fall in specifically the category in which our proposal lays out because with anything, there's, you know, one student may be in one program that meets our planned expectation, but we may end up with two students over in this other program where we had only counted for one. So, as long as we can agree that total number of students, and that's how we received it and understood it, we're in total commitment to meeting that objective.
Regarding that with the total number of students in the various programs, are there any foreseeable delays in terms of accreditation since these would be new programs or do you have existing programs that these would fall under existing accreditation agreements?
Sure. Regarding engineering, obviously, this is a new program for us and that is a substantive change with our accreditor. So, we would certainly have to go through a process and then that's spelled out in our application, at least in the timeline, the points when we would be approaching our accreditor. So, what they will be looking at is the curriculum and is it, you know, the same rigor that we would want it to be and to make sure it matches with peer institutions of like size and nature. They would also be looking at the resources and as you note in our plan related to our proposal for the School of Engineering, we're hiring our Dean a year in advance of when the program would start. We have taken this model directly from a sister institution that is starting engineering this month. And so, we met with them back in the spring, once again, this kind of offer and invitation from the city came our way to pursue and look at this potential program. We immediately contacted the other school. Everything that you see is straight from their process of how they have introduced their program and they had no issues in going through the accreditation process with SAC COC. Engineering is another matter. It is a four-year process and so you will not, a school will not receive accreditation until after the first class graduates. So, it's a lengthy process for the accreditation, but if you're meeting the benchmarks every year, you're fine and able to continue to move to full accreditation after your first graduating class.
So, you think students that are considering an engineering degree would come to you versus going to Virginia Tech or Tennessee Tech or University of Tennessee because...
After they've applied to those three institutions and received a rejection because they don't qualify or they may qualify but because of seat limitations? Yes, I do think they will be looking for engineering schools. Those who truly want to be engineers and didn't give up on it after applying and didn't get accepted and so they go off on some other educational program. But for that person who wants to be an engineer, this is going to be a quality engineering program that is still going to have the rigor, but it is going to be an opportunity for those who have had doors closed elsewhere.
Well, it's a cost issue as well.
I'm sorry?
A cost issue. You may want to go to Caltech or whatever, but you don't have the money, but you have the brains to become an engineer.
Absolutely.
All these big schools have tons of geniuses wanting all those seats.
Correct.
So, the guy with the brains but no money has got no place to go.
Right. And our price point is very strategic. We are lining it right up with Virginia Tech's engineering program, their undergraduate engineering program. So, we feel like we've got a competitive price.
Any more questions? All right. Regarding this item, you had Mr. Don Ashley sign up and then we'll take other comments in the public, so...
Thank you. I'm Don Ashley, 709 Navajo Trail, Bristol, Virginia. I'm the chairman of the IDA and with us tonight, we also have Diana and William, both of William Lester and Diana Oxadine also are on our IDA committee. Kelly had planned to come, but she couldn't come at the last minute and we have two other members that could not come tonight. We met yesterday, three hours, and part of the meeting that we had was this very thing, Bluefield College. As we look at that resolution which you all have before you too, you know, the concern, four and a half million dollars for nine years is a long time. I mean, $500,000 for nine years is the concern and what they're asking for. As you all know, with Alpha no longer receiving the designated TBA money from the BBU system, the money is available. We do have the commitment that the money would be there from TBA and it's to be used for specific purposes. As you know, VI College was about number nine in water and number 10 in electricity. It would very easily fit BBU's mission. BBU would have to weigh in this also, just like you all do, just like the IDA had done and we're going to have to determine, is this what we want to do? I can assure you, yesterday, the IDA had quite a bit of conversation about this and we were not unanimous in our decision, but we ended up recommending to the city council that we pursue this and we approved the resolution that you all had before you all. I think it's a very worthy endeavor. Sure, there's a lot of detail still to be worked out. All the answers aren't completely there and as it was mentioned, there may be some twists and turns that we have to do, but this is a tremendous solution for the campus of VI College to be reactivated, brought back to life with a new birth. I think that part of town would welcome this immensely. And as you know, VI College has been around since 1887. These last two years, it's really been sad to see it close. My wife graduated from VI College. My son graduated from VI College, so we have it near and dear to our heart. Bluefield has given us an opportunity for us to consider. It seems to be very possible for us to go down this road together. You're going to take the IDA and it's going to take the city council and it will take BBU to make it happen. But from the IDA standpoint, we thoroughly recommend pursuing this idea and thank you very much for letting me talk.
Thank you, Mr. Ashley. That was the only person that had signed up, but if there are other members of the public and I think Ms. Marnie wants, or Ms. Jewel?
I'm certainly right there in the middle of that community and I really think that there shouldn't be a vote tonight. I think that it should go out and the people should have a chance to investigate this and we could have some answers like, how many people, how many schools this was sent out for? When did we start sending this out? And where is VI? Is VI back here? Okay. I don't, there's a lot of things, I don't know about this, this school. It sounds like basically if you can't get in here, you can't get in there, you can get in here. What's the cost of tuition? What's the plan?
We don't, we don't own the property. All we're doing is trying to help facilitate the sale. It's up to the purchaser and the seller to work out whatever details as far as logistics and whatnot.
Yet to facilitate a sale, right. I want to make sure that it's the best thing that could happen to this area. I don't want another like VI. I don't know anything about, you know, Bluefield. Maybe they're good for it. I don't know what their financial situation is, but I do know that UVA is sitting on $2, on $5.4 billion in their, in their accounts and I don't know why that couldn't be, we've got Y's down here, you know, why can't we look at that option?
Well, that's something VI can look at if they wish. That's not up to us to do that. It's not our property.
Where is VI? Where's VI?
I don't know.
Okay. So, basically, do they have, does Bluefield have, do you have experience in, you have an engineering program in the program? So, you don't have an engineering program in the program that you live in? Okay. So, you're basically coming over to the tech program and we're going to talk you over here? No? I thought that was...
All right. We were talking with an institution in North Carolina that is of a similar nature to Bluefield, a nonprofit liberal arts-oriented college, and they are launching engineering this fall. No ma'am?
So, they're launching engineering. Do you know how many, how many places around here say within a 50-month community, eight a year?
I don't know. Two, three.
Yeah, there's five or two. And what's the, they are private school. You were talking about STEM technology. Do you know what they call it?
I'm not sure.
Yeah. Yeah. So, there's a private one, but King College are, are private. They don't have an engineering program, but they've got some engineering-type courses and they're pretty incredible. That's just down the street. You've got a north eastern, a north western, you know, what you call it? On test the...
Yeah. It's hard.
Yeah, that's a nursing school, right?
No, it's a community college.
It's a community college, a college of what, four years or...
They offer associate degree programs.
In nursing?
In, in all different programs, not just nursing.
Anyway, I mean, that's, what I, what I can tell is, you know, personally, because I am a graduate, I am a graduate, okay? And we're not just somebody coming here, I want to make sure that it's not like VI and we just would say, yeah, okay? Well, VI already been taught, so, it is a secondary money problem. So, I want to make sure that you have financial ability. I want to know what you, what you think your, or what is the cost of tuition? What's your plans for bringing in the students going and what you're going to offer them and make it out there?
The starting tuition that we're recommending on our proposal is $17,000 for the engineering program. Again, it's equivalent to the undergraduate engineering tuition at Virginia Tech. We do believe will bring value to the community where you live. I certainly understand your sense of concern and wanting to make sure you have a good neighbor and a good partner. I think the more you come to know about Bluefield College, that you will find that we are a good neighbor in our own community where we are. We want to be a good neighbor here and education, higher education is definitely a changing landscape, but your question about there being other schools here in the region, there certainly are. What we're proposing are some unique program opportunities that are not currently being offered at some of the schools that are here in the surrounding region and to take a different approach than how these other schools here in the region are delivering their education.
So, five years is a year, first. But I'm also sure that you're a cool, you have the financial ability to do whatever programs or research we do.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a long-term plan that we will be investing in the early years, just in the programmatic start and the salaries, the equipment, several million dollars, three to four million dollars before the very first engineering student arrives on campus for class. So, we understand, we built the model, we understand what it's going to take. We, our board, administration believe we have the resources, the access to the resources to make the program successful and to get it launched.
Does it have a noun?
We do not because it's being utilized for other purposes that are supporting the educational offerings at Bluefield. So, again, a new model, a new way of approaching the education. Yes, there we are. Not at the level that Virginia Intermont have. We, just the last year, along with the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill, were under sanction. Our issue was related to institutional effectiveness.
And we, the city council, I know. All right.
I think they had athletes taking courses that did not exist.
All right.
Yeah. So, just to give an idea that...
So, you were, so you were on probation or...
Yes, yes, it's a one-year probation. And as was reported to us, as we went into that sanction that related to our institutional effectiveness, there was clear evidence that we were moving in the right direction. They wanted another year to be able to demonstrate, for us to demonstrate to them of our processes to make sure it was...
So, what were the...
Institutional effectiveness. How we were assessing, yeah, assessing our educational programs.
Ms. Jewel, we need to move on. It's very late and I think if you want to ask questions, I'm sure Dr. Alden would be happy to talk to you later, but it is very late and we do need to move on. I would like to point out that before, as Mr. Ashley pointed out, the resolution, IDA recommended to the city council, and we'll have Mr. Curcio read it, but really it is, the city's not a party to that. We're just recommending to the BBU Board that they utilize the funding that they have through the Economic Development Program through TBA to help fund this. So, again, we're not a party to it. Yes, Mr. Rebervik, you seem to have a comment?
I was wondering...
Well, we, no, I want to hear, we'll let you speak in just a second, Nancy.
I'm sorry. I thought you were...
Well, I thought you would go ahead.
Seven, Danny Strick.
Good evening. Art Rebervik, interim president of Virginia Intermont. Real quickly, we want to tell you that we're very, very enthused about what Bluefield College brings or can bring to the campus and to Bristol. As you all know, we still have some details to work out, particularly around the financials, but assuming we are able to resolve those, Bluefield will be a great neighbor in carrying on the VI tradition. So, I just want to say that for the record. We thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Did you have a comment real quick, Ms. Marnie? I will be very brief.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Nancy Marnie. I'm a resident of the City of Bristol, Virginia. I'm a property owner, a, I do pay my tax and please keep this mic turned up, keep the sound up. My mother went to VI College. I'm very familiar with it. I was offered a job there. I turned it down, so I know a lot about VI College. I live on Euclid Avenue. I have a couple of questions here. Who is the accrediting agent for this Bluefield College? Who is the accrediting agent?
That's, that's not the point. That's not a council function.
But it is a part of the process for...
Well, it's between the buyer and the seller.
What?
It's between the buyer and the seller.
Well, all right, I'll jump over that then. I had a couple of questions. I want to know who accredits. I have a master's degree in higher education. I know what I'm talking about. I've held some very prestigious jobs. I am not the new kid on the block. Now, I want to know who's accrediting this college. I want to know who's accrediting all of these programs and I think that asking the BBU Board to use TBA money to the tune of $500,000 a year is not the highest and best use of that money. It sounds to me like the city is getting stuck once... It sounds to me like the city is getting stuck once again with a pig and a poke. I'm not at all sure that we even need a school like this. It sounds good, but there are too many ifs, ands, and assumptions. I would stay away from this. I don't think they have the financial resource to do what they say they're going to do. I don't think the programs have any proven worth or merit. I don't think they have been sanctioned. I don't think they have been accredited. Maybe they have. I haven't heard anybody behind me disagree, but I don't think this is an accredited effort. I think it is still a pig and a poke. VI couldn't pay its bills. This bunch cannot pay their bills. They've already said they don't have enough money. They don't have an endowment, and money is the problem. That's why they're here. I think Bristol, Virginia has needs of a greater use for $500,000 a year, and we've already heard our bondman talking about what we need, and I don't think this is it. I don't think they are prepared at all to do what they're going to have to do to bring success to that campus. Yes, it's a good idea, but I don't think it's the right idea for that particular place, and I would question this. I wouldn't even consider a vote on this tonight. I wouldn't even consider it. You don't have their financial statement unless you have it and haven't told us. There are too many loopholes here. Listen, I've been in higher education too long. I know a lot of questions to ask, which I will spare you tonight.
Again, that's not our-
But your function is going to be to recommend that $500,000 a year be given to them.
To the BBU Board.
What?
To the BBU.
That is the function, and I'm saying-
And if that money doesn't go toward economic development and a big electricity user, then nobody gets it. It just doesn't go.
Well, then, let it not go, but I would not pour money down a rabbit hole either, and the function of this council, according to you, Mr. Hubbard, is to recommend to the BBU that they use TVA's $500,000 a year.
Bristol's money.
Bristol's money, $500,000 a year. I could make a list of other things for that money.
We can't spend it for those other things is the problem.
Oh, I bet I could.
It's not available by contract. We can't spend it on operating expenses, or we can't spend it on the-
You can spend it on economic development.
Yes.
That's the purpose of the money, and that is what the money has been there for all along.
Right.
And I am saying I disagree with your choice of how it is to be used. I can come up with legitimate ways that I think that money could be used in this community far better, and I would be prepared to do that if called upon, but I think you all do not have enough information to, to have a vote on this tonight. I don't even think it should be allowed. I know plenty about VI College. I know a whole lot about the bankruptcy lawyer who went up there and went through the procedure, and we won't get into that. I know a whole lot about what happened at VI, and what I'm saying is, I do not think Bluefield College, as good as it may be, is prepared to take on what they are trying to sell tonight. I don't believe it.
Thank you, Ms. Marnie.
Yeah, I'd just say that, you know, we've had a lot of discussion on this tonight and leading up to tonight, and, you know, this is a tough sale. There is no doubt about this. When you look at the, the need for a college, you know, we need something up on, on the hill where VI was. There's no doubt, but there's more questions being raised than I think there are answers. So, I think, you know, we've got to be really careful here, because we want to make sure that the college is successful, whoever that college is, Bluefield. We want to make sure it's done right. We want to make sure that the financial means make sense, so I do think it needs to be studied. The more I sit here and listen and hear what's going on, I do think it's probably appropriate to table it, so I would make a motion, we table it for further study, and then look at this in more detail, but we can't let grass grow under our feet. You know, we owe these folks an answer, because they're in a negotiation, we're not, but we need to put some guidelines in front of them of when to get back to us and the answers we need to make a better decision. So, my motion is that we table it for further discussion.
All right. Have a motion to table, anybody second?
I'll second.
All right. I have a motion to table in a second. Any, any further discussion? All right. Here none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Moonpower?
Yes.
Steele?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes. All right. So, we'll table that. Last item on our agenda, item number nine, consider a street closure request for downtown events associated with the Battle of Bristol football game September 8th, 2016, and September 9th, 2016.
Mayor, I may be diagramming, including in your package showed the state street closure ending at Stoneman Family Way, and we'd like to extend that to Carter Family Way as the events have been finalized, so.
Okay. We'll note that that change in the street closure, that it extends from Carter Family Way all the way to MLK. Is that correct? Ms. Graber?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Approve.
Second. Hey, we got another half hour?
I don't.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Hubbard, seconded by Mr. Steele to approve. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Moonpower?
Yes.
Steele?
Hartley?
Yes. Being no further business, we stand adjourned.
Yeah. I'll quit.